Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 26, 2018 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We need to go into an executive session. There is a need for executive session to discuss the litigation regarding Woods subdivision, because an open meeting may have detrimental effects on the position of the town with the intent to go back into open session. I need a motion, and I need it seconded.
Move or go into executive session.
It's seconded. Move and seconded. Roll call, vote please.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We are now in executive session.
for our matter regarding the Woods subdivision. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Move and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing, not all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Approval of a...
I think I'd skip that one.
What's up? You might take more than five minutes. Oh, yes, that one, definitely. Zoning referral to the planning board. This, Mr. Mayo?
In your packet, there is a zoning referral of actually an increase of fees for the Board of Appeals. On the Chapter 40A, all zoning matters, including fees for zoning matters, needs to go to a planning board for public hearing. So all that this is, is to refer the matter to the planning board for public hearing prior to town meeting. I'll tell you that, I forget it was Chapter 40A, Section whatever, maybe Phi, says the board shall refer it, so...
Shall, so we are shall.
So why vote?
So why vote?
Do I have a motion?
I move that we shall. To the zoning board.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Central voting, do we have? Ms. Young, here.
She's up front.
No, let's move. Well, we can't go into that. We can't go into that. What should we take next, Mr. Mayor?
If you think you can do F, I'll do F in three minutes.
F? Okay, let's do F.
We could always come back to it. One thing that I've been working on with the help of wonderful Wakefield skating community, hockeying community, as well as Anne Santos and Tony Longo, is something that this town has talked about for a long time, and that is the potential of having a skating rink, hockey rink, hockey arena, whatever you want to call it, in the town of Wakefield. This is something that has come up before. I think it came up in the '70s and did not pass town meeting by a few votes. What we have done is we have talked to the neighbors up the hill, the vocational school, and there is land up there past Hemlock Road, off of Hemlock Road, past Landrean Field, kind of by the guard shack there, tucked in back there, that when you go up the hill there, does flatten out and could be a potential site for a hockey rink that would be shared by the Voke, by the town of Wakefield. What we would be looking for in it, at least at this point, what we'd be looking for in it after a meeting with this group of people, is preferred ice time for our Wakefield Boys and Girls Hockey Team and the Vocational School Hockey Teams, boys and girls. Preferred ice time for our Wakefield youth skating group. Locker rooms as well. We would be looking to have the two sheets of ice. We did an economic analysis, had that done. It appears that two pairs of ice, two sheets of ice is supported, and having an arena there that would allow for MIAA tournaments and games and matches, what have you. Another part of this is that a second means of egress would be included, which would go out up on Farm Street, almost at the Saugus Line. So you would have a second means of egress for the Voke, which would be great, you know, in the normal times, and help out with the arena. All we're looking for tonight is to go forward and send out the RFP, which is Request for Proposals. Part of it is, is that there would be a long-term lease, I'm putting lease in big quotation marks, for the land up there. We would be looking to basically model our lease after the lease of Burbank Arena in Reading, where the town of Reading leases that arena out. It's managed and run by an independent agency. Every year, they sit down, they go over their books, and after money is kept for capital and what have you, to make sure the rink is upkept, there is a payment to the town. Some years, it's $10,000; some years, it's $30,000; some years, it's $5,000. To me, this is not a moneymaker. It's about keeping our kids on campus, about reducing the cost of the sport of hockey for our people in Wakefield. So I don't know if Anne or Tony wanted to jump in.
Thank you.
I think this is something that folks in the skating world in Wakefield have approached me for years about. You know, knowing myself as a hockey mom, I think it's great, and I think your point about, we're not doing this to be a moneymaker, excuse me, is key. We're doing it so that our kids can have easy access to a rink, they don't have to get in cars to drive, they can walk up the hill, and it just improves the whole campus of Wakefield High School. I mean, this is definitely a betterment. To me, the second means of egress is a public safety issue that would be wonderful. You know, we saw an incident today that if there was a second means of egress, probably would have made life a little bit easier. So I think it's a RFP that was looked at by a lot of thoughtful people. We hired a consultant. I'm very confident on it, so we'll see what happens.
Thank you. We will make a little money off it. There will be some gate receipts, some concessions, so it won't be a moneymaker for us, but it'll be a money, you know, definitely be a money saver. We won't have to get in buses and, you know, go to other places. But this is something that the hockey, you know, to include myself in this discussion as working on this project, these hockey dads worked and hockey moms worked in this, you know, overwhelmingly, a lot more than I did. And it's something that we need, if we're continually making Wakefield a better place, this is a direction we have to go.
And I'm looking to go for an RFP. We'll have to come back to this board and town meeting.
Right. I mean, this is something that we've actually had discussed years ago as a conceptual idea, but after working by yourself and Tony on this with the hockey community, it's now potentially moving forward as seeking an RFP. So great job to both of you on getting it to this point. So all we need right now then is to vote to put it out.
Put it out for bid.
Approve it, put it out for bid. Tony, Ian?
Put this RFP out for bid.
Move and seconded. Discussion.
So what's the process when the RFP comes back for us? Because I think, just educate me.
Well, we would, we'll reopen them all up at the same time, first of all.
Yeah.
We would then bring them back. The board could review, ask for all of them to review. We could do whatever. You would say everything.
Can we negotiate with all of them, or should we pick one?
We would probably pick one at that point, yeah, and then negotiate. Or none. We may get none that we like. But the board would have to pick, would go to town meeting, we'd have to sign, and we'd have to establish an intermunicipal agreement with vocational school once it's all done. So there's a lot of, all this is, is let's see what the interest is out there.
I'd just like to, you agree, make sure the end product is just done well.
Oh, yeah.
You can bang these, you can bang this out, and it'll look like another MDC rink for a short doe.
Massively.
And regret it in a hurry.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Or you can do it well and have it be like a Marlboro.
Yeah.
Right?
That's what we'd want. We wanted part of our campus.
Pick a better one.
Think about how good this campus is now. We want to keep it part of that campus.
I was intimately involved with the building of fields out here from, you know, from soup to nuts, and the first thing that we wanted to do was, you know, we wanted to do it once, and we wanted to do it right. So, and I think we did.
Is Mr. Tarbell involved in this?
Yes, or he should be.
He will be.
He built a rink on campus of Illinois.
They will be.
And that is a lovely rink.
I think that we will make sure that we have the best proposal that suits our needs.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure that it wasn't, we didn't, I was very confident that we didn't, by the way. I was just kind of asking if we didn't.
Ed?
I don't want to get stuck with a bad rink.
Just to be clear, Steve, ultimately, this is not costing any taxpayer dollars, but providing a benefit to the town.
Correct.
That's what the expectation is.
That is our expectation, and I think we'll actually get money out of it.
I think that that's important messaging for the town, to understand that there's a benefit that's being derived at no cost.
Have you tried that sometime?
I don't know. I'm just saying, we're going to have somebody, a private person develop it, and then it's going to be a benefit to the town.
We, we, yes, that's what I'm saying.
You lie.
There will be part of the lease, and I know we have a public hearing to go into, Mr. Chairman, part of the lease agreement would be, we want to make sure the place is upkept, so we would look at everything and then see what their revenues were minus their costs, and then the portion we want to have reserves for capital, and then there would be, as I'm proposing it, money coming in at that point for leasing.
Any further questions?
There's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Let us move to our first public hearing. We have a 710 with La Chivas Inc. at 979 Main Street for an all-alcohol license, common victuals license, and an entertainment license. Mr. McGreal. It's La Chivas, Mr. DeNardo. Mr. La Chivas, I'm sorry. Put your Mexican hat on. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, attorney Brian McGreal with offices at 599 North Avenue, representing La Chivas Inc., doing businesses, Tequila's Grill and Cantina would actually be the name. With me tonight is Eric Brambilla, to my far right. Eric is a 70% shareholder and president of La Chivas. Also here is Alvaro Arachiga, who is a 30% shareholder and the proposed manager of the alcohol license at La Chivas. Alvaro is to my direct right. As part of this transaction that we're involved in, on leasing the property, which I'll get into some detail on, we've applied from your board for application for an alcohol license, application for common victuals license, and application for entertainment license in the form of four televisions. La Chivas is making a significant commitment to Wakefield. It has entered into a five-year lease with two five-year options. lease with two five-year options to extend the term of the lease for the property located at 979 Main Street, Greenwood Plaza. It's the former home of Portobello's Restaurant, which has now vacated. We have submitted a detailed application package showing the proposal with information on La Chivas and its investors, these two gentlemen, along with a copy of the lease. I think it's important to note that, and I'll get into some detail on this as we go forward tonight, but Eric Brambilla has had some pretty significant experience in the restaurant business. He has two restaurants currently. One is by the name of Tequilas, and that is in Chelmsford, and another one by the name of Exetera?
Exstapa.
Exstapa, thank you, which is located in Groton, Massachusetts. Tequilas has been in business for approximately about a year. Coming up in the, the Exstapa has been in business for five years. And I do have a handout that I'd like to give. Pretty basic, so I'm sorry to spring it on you, but it's really just some basic information on both of those restaurants. If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think the information is helpful. I'd like to actually read into the record, one of the handouts that I gave you, which is really a background of Eric, talks about his family. His family comprised of cousins, aunts, and uncles, currently own and operate upwards of 30 Mexican restaurants in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So they're pretty committed to this industry. I want to stress that this is a restaurant. It's not a bar. If you look at the floor plans that we submitted, there's a small bar. It only has eight seats to it, which is really within the restaurant itself. So the real stress here is a family atmosphere with Mexican fare. As I mentioned, in the handout that talks about Eric, referring to Eric Brambilla, it states that he was born owner, he is the owner of Tequila's Grill Cantina, and, you know, basically, people have asked how he started his business. Eric was born and raised in the city of Chicago. Both of his parents are of Mexican origin. Eric remembers spending summer and winter vacation at his parents' hometown, a small town in the state of Jalisco, Mexico, called Union de Tula. Even though not born or raised in Mexico, Eric has always had a passion and love for the Mexican culture. The food, the meals, the cook at home, and the traditions from Union de Tula have stuck with him through time, and now he brings the flavors and traditions to our Massachusetts community. Eric has been a hard worker since an early age. At the age of 16, he began to work selling ice cream, an ice cream truck with his uncle on the streets of Chicago. After turning 17, he decided to expand his opportunities to look for a better future, moving 800 miles away from his home to work in North Carolina for one of his cousins at a Mexican restaurant. Having no experience in the business, Eric was forced to begin from the bottom, washing dishes. Determined to be successful in this business, that he enjoyed, he was quick to move up in positions, first bussing tables, then becoming a server. After gaining experience, proving to have skills and responsibility to the management of a restaurant, he was given the opportunity to become manager. Eric took this opportunity to learn more about this business, hoping to one day open his own place. After working 10 years in North Carolina at the age of 27, he saved up every dollar he could to be a restaurant owner. One of his cousins, who was a restaurant owner already, called him offering a partnership at a new location in Massachusetts. With no hesitation, Eric took this great opportunity. Finally, after remodeling the new place in the town of Groton, on May 22 of 2013, Eric opened his restaurant, Exstapa Mexican Grill and Cantina, being the third location of his family-owned chain. Exstapa in Groton was a success from the first day it opened its doors with roughly 2,500 square feet. Eric was shocked to see the line of people outside waiting to try the new spot in town. With the success achieved from this location, Eric was eager to expand and was determined to achieve yet another goal. This time, he wanted to create something different. Eric wanted to bring together those memories from Mexico's beautiful culture and its flavors to his customers, to experience through fresh meals like the ones that were prepared while having dinner with his family. He simply wanted people to know Mexico through its flavors and cultures. Tequila Grill and Cantina opened to the public in April 23 of 2017. This is a restaurant in Chelmsford. With this new concept, Eric was able to win over people's palate. The guests at Tequila's can sense Mexico's culture since they walk in with the day of the dead decor and the smell of fresh food. Tequila's Grill offers authentic, traditional Mexican food with a blonde twist for a fun style, with a variety of about 100 different tequilas to taste, fresh-made margaritas, et cetera, a friendly atmosphere. So I thought that might be helpful, just to give you a background of who the majority owner of this restaurant is, that he's committed to this industry. He knows what he's doing. He has come up through the ranks. As far as procedural aspects of this, I'd like to note that, related to the hearing, this was published in the Wakefield Daily Item. It's requested by Massachusetts Senator Loesch, Chapter 138. We also mailed notice by certified mail to all the butters as required and to churches and schools within 500 feet, as was certified by the assessor. I have the certified list with a copy of the green cards that I will give to Sherri before I leave tonight, and I want to thank her for helping orchestrating that. It's a lot of work on her behalf. As I've mentioned, Alvaro, who is a very close friend of Eric's, is the proposed manager of the license. He has experience in the restaurant industry. He has worked directly at Exstapa as a manager under Eric, so he has trained. In that regard, he is also tip certified. Both of these are the two owners, the only owners, so they are certainly vested in making this a success and operating efficiently. Eric is a 70% shareholder, as was disclosed in the application materials, and president will be very involved in the day-to-day operations of this restaurant. And as I've just explained, he has significant experience in this industry. For purposes of full disclosure, I do want to mention that, to point out, that Alvaro did have an issue in Wyoming. About four years ago, he was involved with the driving under the influence charge. He pled guilty to that. He did all the required courses in Wyoming, and we submitted an affidavit explaining that, but I do want the board to know that. I want it for full disclosure purposes. And him and I have talked about it. He learned from that experience, and he feels he will use that as an advantage in moving forward, having a full understanding, kind of going through that experience himself. We have provided a floor plan. There's a small fenced-in patio in front of the restaurant. Where La Chivas would like to have seasonal outdoor seating. It was part of the rehab that went through at the 979 Main Street, the Greenwood Plaza, that was approved by the Board of Appeals. Just outside the restaurant is kind of a wrought iron fenced-in patio area, pretty small. It's only about approximately 500 square feet. Their floor plan shows a maximum of 60 seats. We're saying it will be 60, including the outdoor dining, because what they'll do is, whatever seats they could fit out there in the summertime or the nice weather, they would just remove them from the inside. So it's not like they're looking for that seating in addition to what would be inside. It would just be kind of flex seating, if you will. La Chivas is excited about opening in Wakefield. As I've mentioned, they're very successful in Groton, and I'd also like to stress that since they have opened in Groton, in Chelmsford, they have had no issues with their alcohol license. They have not been called before any boards, any hearings or anything in that regard. There have been no issues whatsoever. When I mentioned that to Eric, I asked him the question, and his response was, what we have issues with? You know, we're a restaurant, so. So with that said, we're certainly happy to answer any questions that the board might have. Mr. Chairman?
Members of the board.
First, thank you for that full disclosure on that. I really appreciate that. There's no doubt in my mind you guys will be successful there. The people of Greenwood, the people of Wakefield have been looking forward to a Mexican restaurant. My comment is geared towards the Casoli family, the landlords. You know, he had, somebody moved out a little less than a year ago. He was very aggressive in getting a new tenant and getting that storefront filled. I wish some of our landlords downtown could take a quick lesson from Mr. Casoli, but good luck, guys. Looking forward to it. I'm in walking distance, and you'll see me there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments from the board?
I see, Alvaro, that your affidavit says that you're currently training for tip certified. Are you trained, or are you?
Took training.
Did you take the training for tips, or are you currently?
Yeah.
So, all right. And then is everyone that would be working there tip certified, or will they, is that a requirement?
Everyone, yeah.
Okay. So just, one other question. I don't know if you're familiar, but we've had a couple issues recently with other establishments that have come before the board with some issues in recent months with patrons and perhaps overconsumption, but perhaps not. Have you, are you aware of that, and what sort of plan do you have in place in terms of how your staffing levels and the like, and when management will be on duty when alcohol is being served, just to make sure that you don't find yourself in a similar situation?
Yeah, everybody will be tip certified, and either when this is their off or whatever, I'll be there. Either of us will be there all the time. And then all the servers are tip certified when they do the application to get hired and stuff.
So during business hours, it'll be one of the two of you.
Oh, yeah, we will be there, yes.
Sure.
So when's, when is the expected opening date?
We're about ready, just.
Great. So I've been to the, I've been to the Chelmsford location, so I'm excited that you guys are moving to Wakefield.
You like it?
I did, I did. And like Tony, I live, I live across the street, so you will still be there often, so we're looking forward to you guys.
Thank you so much.
Coming to town.
I agree. We need a Mexican restaurant.
Yeah.
And good food. I'm very excited for the addition.
Yeah, we're ready. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Fellaini?
Where are you on hours, operating hours?
We talked about that, and we'll leave it up to the board. I think, you know, the board has had, has usually liked to let the option that, you know, if they want to expand, they can. But their typical operating hours in their other locations would be Sunday through Thursday, 11 to 10, and then Friday to Saturday, 11 to 11. So, you know, they're really a restaurant. They're not going to be open until 1:00 in the morning. I don't think a lot of people are, you know, but, you know, we're kind of, with the discretion of the board, what the board might, what the flavor of the board is in that regard.
I'm always a fan, as you probably know, of people, just give you the broadest hours to enable you to run your business and not have to worry that one night when you have a special event or something like that, and it's, you know, do you really want to get kicked out at 10 o'clock or shut the place down at 10:00 when you've got, you know, a group of old ladies playing bridge, drinking tequila, whatever it might be.
What do you recommend?
I just, what are the hours, what was Portobello's hours?
Well, I can tell you, Sherri was kind enough to look for me today to confirm what things hours are.
Which, what, whose hours?
Things.
Thanks, oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
So Sherri did look that up today. Things are Sunday through Saturday, 11:30 to 12:30.
Sunday through Saturday?
Basically seven days, right, Sherri? Seven days a week, 11:30 to 12:30.
That's what we approve them for.
That's right, yes, yeah.
It closes at 9:00.
It's rarely open past 10:00.
You set your own hours. We're just giving you the ability to.
If it's possible, we could stay open and open later.
You set your, your restaurant, you set your own hours.
Just do like 11:00 to 12:00.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great.
11:00 to 12:00?
Yeah.
Whoever makes the motion, then add the time change, too, please.
Okay. That'd be 11:00 a.m.
Yes. Any further comments?
What do we stand on of available licenses in town?
After tonight, assuming both, we would have four all-alcohol licenses left, correct? Sherri?
That is correct.
Correct. And one beer and wine.
And then we could petition the state for additional.
We could, and who knows, if our population isn't going up, then we may get bumped up too, so.
Okay.
I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. So a vote from the floor, oh, no, we have to open the, no, we need to open it to the public. Anyone from the public wishes to make a comment? Hearing none. Very good. Motion?
I'd like to make a motion then to allow for the all-alcohol licenses requested for the hours of, it sounds like 11:00 to 12:00 p.m. Is that what you guys are looking? 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., to 12:00 a.m.?
Yeah.
Is that what you're looking for?
Seven days.
Seven days a week?
Yeah.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
We're really excited.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McGreal, do you need a finding?
Right here.
Yes.
There's a school within.
And church. And a church?
Not a school.
It's a church.
Not detrimental, or?
Okay, so I need a motion that the Wakefield Board of Selectmen has determined that the licensing of all alcohol relating to the premises of 979 Main Street, Wakefield, Massachusetts, is not detrimental to the educational and spiritual activities of any school or church.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, and I think everyone needs to sign this.
Can I?
Let's, yes.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, under our bylaw, there's fingerprinting that needs to be done, so make sure that that gets done.
Let's close the public hearing.
I hope we close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
How about the entertainment and the?
Move to approve the entertainment.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, we don't need that in public hearing, all right.
No, just do that.
Need a motion to approve the victuals license for the said premises.
Nine.
979 Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second at all favor.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve an entertainment license for 979 Main Street.
So moved.
Moving second at all favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I think you have all three.
We do.
All four. Great. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Jump right into 175 North Ave.
Okay. It's a little bit late for this public hearing. This is a 7:20 public hearing for CMRG LLC at 175 North Ave for an all-alcohol license, common victuals license, and an entertainment license.
This is Mr. Maggiore's property. How you doing, Matt?
175 is the one near the high, I mean, the new one. Mr. McGreal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Nice to see you here again.
Good to be here, always. Thank you. Again, for the record, attorney Brian McGreal, representing CMRG LLC, DBA, Tono, Wakefield. This is regarding 175 North Avenue in Wakefield. With me tonight is Anthony Catarano and Matthew Maggiore. They are both members and managers of CMRG LLC. Matthew is the proposed manager of the all-alcohol license also. I guess I should start by giving a little background on the property. The Maggiore family, led by Matthew, pursuant to the town's new railroad district zoning bylaw.
Mr. McGreal, may I interrupt you for just two seconds?
Sure.
Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Moving seconded, all favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. McGreal.
Do I have to start over?
I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make you phone up.
Sorry for the. Is that what I'm saying? No, the Maggiore family, led by Matthew, pursuant to the town's new railroad district zoning bylaw, for lack of a better term, that was implemented to attract mixed-use developments within 2,500 feet of the railroad station. Matthew and his family designed, permitted, and built the mixed-use property located at 175 North Avenue, now known as Wakefield Station, in which Tono, Wakefield, will be located. The building contains 60 residential condominium units on the upper floors with approximately 8,000 square feet of commercial space on the first floor. Tono, Wakefield, will occupy just over 5,000 square feet of that 8,000 square feet of commercial area, and they will also have exclusive rights to the expansive patio commercial area, and they will also have exclusive rights to the expansive patio, on-premise's patio, for seasonal outdoor dining that will be entirely on the property. I'd like to state that all of the residential units, all 60, are under agreement, and we expect to commence closings within the next couple of weeks to start selling them. This project was so popular that they were virtually all sold before the foundation was done. They were, they were basically all sold just from, you know, word of mouth and what people saw online as far as the product of the building. This is, I think, the flagship project for the new bylaw that was implemented, and through the town administrator, I'd like to invite board members to walk through this project before closings occur on the units, just so you can get an idea of the quality of this project, how it works with the commercial, how it works with the railroad. I walked through the first time in a while the other day, and to see these units finished and the views that they have, and the excitement for the people that are moving in. So, you know, through the town administrator, if, you know, if you want to do it individually or as a group, we would love to have you, right, Matt?
Absolutely.
To come through and take a look at it. The Maggiore's, for lack of a better term, I've gotten to know this family very well, were very fussy on who would occupy the commercial space. I constantly called Matthew throughout the construction of the project. I said, what's going on with the commercial space? And he said, we're not ready yet. We're getting a lot of calls from, you know, certain, you know, smaller places that we want, you know, we want the right tenant, we want the right fit, we want that right fit for the building, for our unit owners, and for the town as a whole. This is a great location, and we're gonna, we're gonna wait it out until we get the right person to come in. They recognize the quality of the commercial occupant is critical to the project and critical to the town as, as a whole for this flagship project. Maggiore's were fortunate enough to meet Anthony Catarano, and they both agreed that Wakefield Station would be a perfect fit for Tono Wakefield. As you can see from the application package, Anthony is the majority owner, and various members of the Maggiore family are the other owners of Tono Wakefield. So it's really in-house what's going on here. Thus, not only does the project get a fantastic restaurant in the commercial space, but we also have the Maggiore family continuing to have a vested interest in the project that they have taken pride of over, over the past three years in building it meticulously from the ground up. As part of this application, we have applied for an all alcohol license, a common victual license, and an entertainment license for five televisions. As you can see from the lease that we provided and the information on the construction, Tono Wakefield is making a significant commitment to Wakefield, an investment in Wakefield. It has entered into an 87-month lease with multiple options to extend that term. It also is going to do a $650,000 build-out for the restaurant, which is really significant. You know, obviously the shell is there, but now the restaurant will get constructed, and the, and the approximate cost of that is $650,000, as was, as was stated in the application. We have submitted detailed information in the package regarding the investors, along with a copy of the lease that I just spoke about. Now, I guess, moving on to Anthony Catarano. Anthony is quickly becoming one of the most respected chefs and restaurateurs in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and New England. Anthony opened up his first restaurant, Preza, in Boston's historic North End, which has earned top ratings and delighted diners for more than 15 years that he has been in business. Subsequent to that, he brought the old world style of cooking to Gloucester, Massachusetts with Tono, which, if you were wondering, is Italian, and Italian means tuna. And the culinary program is designed to showcase Italian seafood classics. Now, in conjunction with the Maggiore's, the famed chef and restaurateur is bringing Tono to Wakefield, which we think will be a great amenity for Wakefield residents and also help Wakefield get to that goal of becoming a key destination spot in the area, because people currently travel all up and down 128 to go to Tono in Gloucester. And Anthony has said that a lot of his customers in the greater Wakefield area are really excited that they, they don't have to drive up to Gloucester all the time to, to get a taste of his food. We have submitted a letter of support from the mayor of Gloucester that was in your packet that I won't read, but it's pretty strongly states how, what Anthony has done for the city of Gloucester and how he operates his business there. We've also provided notice pursuant to the Wakefield daily item and certified mail to a butters, as is required by Mass General Laws, Chapter 138. As mentioned, Matthew Maggiore is a vested owner and the proposed manager of the license. Although Matthew does not have restaurant experience, I can tell you from dealing with Matt for the past four years, he's quite the businessman and quite the responsible person. He built that building himself from the ground up each day, and you can kind of see how that went along. Matt is meticulous, the way he goes about things. Matt has, Matt will have an office in the building of his own outside of the restaurant. He's going to stay on the property, and he was the logical choice for this because he's going to be there all the time. And, you know, I believe that, you know, you, to have a vested, someone with an ownership interest in that management role is a benefit, because any harm that happens to that business hurts them as far as their investment goes. Anthony obviously will be very involved, is a 70% owner, he'll be there, day-to-day operations also. We have provided a floor plan that shows the restaurant, the onsite patio in front of the building for seasonal outdoor seating, as I've already mentioned. The maximum seating would be 215, that would include the outdoor seating, that, you know, will probably only be there for about four months out of the year. But this patio, I don't think the site plan that we submitted does justice to it. It is really beautiful. It's an elevated patio overlooking North Avenue in front of the building. It's some, a little bit elevated, Matt?
Yeah, that part of the building, it's about two and a half feet above sidewalk grade.
Will have railings coming around?
Fully enclosed.
And some of it will be undercover?
A portion of it's undercover, and there's about 10 feet that projects out to the sidewalk that would be exposed to the elements.
So with that said, I mean, that's our presentation. I'm excited to bring this restaurant before you onboard. I know Matt is with the building, and I think Anthony's very excited to become part of Wakefield.
This is an interesting one for me. I was, I was at Preza, if not the night it opened, maybe at the soft opening before it opened in 19, 2001, 2098. Give me a year. What was it?
2000.
2000, all right, yeah. And to this day, if somebody comes into Boston and says, I want to go to eat in the North End, where should I go? I say, you know, Hanover Street's cool, but take a turn and go down, you gotta go eat a Preza, and you gotta get the table and the window in the front. So it's, it's a tremendous restaurant. I've known Anthony as a chef and watched him in action. Passionate about the food and the product and what he does, it's not, I think, if somebody actually do this without, without making a buck, you'd probably still do it, I'm serious. So I'm delighted personally that, you know, somebody of his caliber and stature wants to put his name in a restaurant in Wakefield, it's a, it's a big deal. This is the kind of investment that we've been seeking for a long time, and I think it's wonderful. So you know how I feel. Welcome.
You know, I, when you talked about someone being vested in it, that, that's huge for, for us to consider when a business is opening, because you want to make it work. I've seen, Matt, when you did the Lincoln School, that was an immaculate construction project. I drove, I drive by this several times a day because I, I live close by, and I was amazed at how neat that construction project was. It, it was immaculate. I mean, I said that word again, but, which goes to your meticulousness and, and how I, I feel like, how did Wakefield get so lucky, kind of, to get such a great business in? This is wonderful for us, so.
It's a two-way street. Wakefield's been great to us, too.
Awesome.
Very supportive, so we're really excited.
Absolutely. It looks great. Thank you.
Just a quick question. I'm related to the restaurant. Want to, the project?
One of those side, those concrete barriers coming out. Why do you ask?
Well, we're, we're putting together the finishing touches of the, a temporary sidewalk at that corner, because we have to go build that patio in conjunction with the interior fit-up of the restaurant. So the, that's getting paved tomorrow, so I'm hoping Thursday, Friday, you're gonna start seeing those Jersey birds.
I'm only thinking of the safety, some of the pedestrians and the Galvin students that go back and forth all the time, but good luck.
In the end.
Welcome to Wakefield, and you have our support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How is it determined who's going to be the, the manager of the license? Because it seems like someone with restaurant experience would have been the more logical person to, so how do we understand what that thought process was?
The thought process was that Matt is there, he has the ownership interest, and, you know, Matt is a hands-on person. He's, as, you know, it's been said, he's very meticulous the way he goes about things, he's very responsible, and he will be there, as stated, for 40 hours a week. Perhaps that might change at some point, and we would have to come back to this board if they determine that they had a responsible employee to take over. But, you know, the restaurant's in the process of being built out, so at this point, you know, I think it's important to put a responsible person in charge of that, not having any employees at this point. Anthony is already the manager at one of his other locations, so you can't be the manager at two locations, because you need to assure you're going to be there for a minimum of 40 hours to, to, you know, be responsible. So, you know, when we put this package together, you know, Matt wanted to do it, number one, because as I said, he is hands-on, and number two, he has an ownership interest, so he was really the logical choice at this point.
And Matt, you probably, you may have heard me mention to the, the folks before you too, you know, Wakefield wants to be as business-friendly as possible, certainly, and I'm delighted you guys are coming, as is, I think, the entire board. It's great, the project is great, this sounds like a great concept. I would just ask that you be mindful of, like, kind of, the long-term, like, approach to this, and we have had some issues in recent months with some of these other establishments. And they've, and they've had, you know, onsite managers and notwithstanding, you know, that's been an issue, so I, I would ask that you think long and hard about how you'd want a purchase going forward if you find that you're not, you know, committing the amount of hours that would be required to make sure that, except seeing here, the, it looks like the plant's about, what, 16 bar stools or thereabouts, so around the bar. So it's, it's not a small bar. I mean, I, I think people oft, probably often go there to get a drink, myself included. But I just want to make sure that, you know, you're mindful of that, because, you know, looking at, at the chief sitting behind you, I'm concerned about our officers to make sure that, you know, we have, you know, great development opportunities, but safe, you know, safe experiences for our residents here, too, and, and, you know, and our public servants, so. Sure. And just to know, we, we're also maintaining ownership of all the commercial space, so that's a, the commercial condos of which one of my entities will own those, so we're actually physically managing all the other properties, you know, the balance of the property. Further, you know, we've developed relationships with 60 homeowners upstairs, so, you know, it's kind of a all eggs in one basket type of thing. We have, we have to protect the community, we have to be mindful of the people living above us, and, and, I mean, Anthony's never had an issue in either of his restaurants, and we're certainly not going to put up with any shenanigans. This is a, you know, higher-end establishment that is really centered around, you know, good food. Obviously, there's, we're here for an alcohol license, but, you know, the food is the primary reason to come to the restaurant and work, and make sure it remains, you know, professional, upscale, and, you know. And what is left in the, I know that you have one tenant already, what is, I guess, two, this, the restaurant, I mean, the second, what is left of the commercial square footage, and what are your expectations with that? So rebirth transformation is waiting to occupy the, the left front corner of the building in 2,000 square feet. At-grade, the, this restaurant totals 5,166, but there's a portion of that, that basement space. The actual at-grade interior footprint of that space is just over 4,100 square feet, so that leaves about 1,700 square feet for the center tenant. And, you know, we're in conversations with some, some folks interested in doing a coffee shop, a grab-and-go place, you know, something, again, you know, we've had, been approached with a ton of different uses and proposals, and we've turned them away because we really wanted to dial in and get the right tenants for this building that are going to complement the residential upstairs. So we thought, you know, a grab-and-go place, smoothie place, coffee, you know, something that's low-impact, but again, you know, user-friendly for upstairs. So you expect one, one tenant. One, one tenant, so there'd be a total of three tenants in the building. Right, okay, thanks.
I look forward to the whole project being complete. I welcome you coming in. I think Tono's is going to be just what Wakefield's looking for as far as an establishment to draw more people into the town. I've been watching the building go up bit by bit, and you're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
When's the opening?
Of the residential or the restaurant?
Both, that's okay, I'll put you on the line here. No, I, I wish both of you all the best on this, it's a great boost for us, great job. Let's go to Marie first.
Public.
Yes.
I'm not the best at reading plans, and I guess I've seen the construction. I just want to be mindful of the sidewalk and the patio. I love outdoor seating, but the school's right there, and I run past that place all the time, so just be mindful of the patio and just people using that sidewalk a lot. Just something to consider as we talk about Main Streets and being a walkable city, just to be mindful of that.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Two things. We'll do ours second. First, just let me ask, I don't want to make it an issue, I'm just curious. Parking, I'm sure you got relief for parking at the zoning board, right? What, what is the expectation for parking? Like the, the spots that are there for commuters kind of turn over at night, or what's the?
So there's, there's 24 off-street parking spaces just for the retail component?
There are buildings, all right.
On, on Armory Street.
In addition to the residential, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And then there's, there's two-hour parking that we're carving in on West Water Street, so the lane shift in West Water Street, and so on our side of the street, there's, there'll be, I believe, six spaces, five or six spaces that get striped in there. I believe that's two-hour parking. There's some two-hour parking on Armory as well. And then, you know, across the street, potentially, obviously, it's pay-to-park, so I'm not going to say the.
Is it pay-to-park at night, too? Is it, what time is that at night?
Technically, yeah, you pay for the day, but.
Wow.
I don't think anyone's checking after the commuters leave, because I, you know, at school events, I always park there. But it's, it's the MBTS.
It's $3 a day. I tried it out in park there, and we try to discourage our construction guys from parking there, but.
But they do.
From time to time, they do, and it's three bucks, I think it's three, four dollars a day.
All right.
I gotta say, too, Uber's becoming real popular.
Of course.
And, you know, in the city, we used to valet 30, 40 cars on a busy Saturday. We might valet 10 now, and I think that's definitely spreading into the suburbs.
Yeah.
You know, even in Gloucester, people will come from the North Shore area in, in an Uber, so you might even see, hoping some of that as well.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
I didn't want to raise it as a problem, I was just curious.
Yeah.
More from your standpoint.
Yeah.
I was actually thinking, it's a tough location to open a restaurant with limited parking. I was kind of thinking what your thought was on it, so.
Yeah, I've driven by that train station at night a few times before I got myself into this whole thing to make sure that there wasn't a park.
Yeah, yeah, there is, there's one. All right, and then hours, good old discussion. What's that?
It's easier than the North End, Brian.
Yeah.
Hours.
Cheaper.
Ours?
Any further comments from the board before opening up the, ours?
Yeah.
Um, Matt, what, Anthony, hours that you anticipate being open?
Um, we, we were going to do, um, looking to do brunch from ten to two on just Sundays, uh, the bar would open at four o'clock, um, and then the kitchen would close at ten, yeah, and then.
But again, we like to have as, to your point, enough flexibility that if there was the event and they were playing bridge at our place, um, you know, we, we wouldn't be penalized if it didn't run, run over, but it's, it's not a, it's not a party destination where, where, where people are spilling out into the parking lot and, and making a ton of noise.
I, I have two kids, a wife, I, I want to be home too.
So do you, would you want the extension for the same as the last one with the eleven to twelve?
Ten. The city likes to open at ten for brunch.
Oh, it's ten, so, uh, ten on Sunday.
Ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve?
Uh, ten to two.
Uh, ten to twelve, yeah, yeah. Ten in the morning till mid, uh, twelve in the morning?
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta, Tom and I might need to look at that because.
Yeah, right, because I don't think you can go that.
I think under the A B C C, there's a, there's a, there's a limit on how early it can open, except for Sundays, with an exclusion, exclusion for brunch.
Okay.
But we would, we would take.
I don't think you can, I don't think you can say every day, ten AM.
In the other day, right?
Yeah.
So, we'd be fine with four, four to midnight every other day other than Sunday, which would be ten to, ten to two, Sunday?
Yeah, ten to two on Sunday.
You're not going to be open for di, uh, you close at two on Sunday?
Well, we'd be open for dinner at four, so we'd reopen at four.
When were you doing the last one, twelve to twelve?
But, is, is being open at ten on Sunday, there'll be a problem if we do a ten on Monday through Friday, is that correct?
But, yeah, so I hear they, they're willing to start later on, on Sundays.
Right.
No, not, well, Sunday, I believe there can be an exception on Sunday, um, so, we can look at that, but I'd like to get the vote allowing it, if there's a problem that we just can't do it, we'll just bump it to when it becomes.
Why don't we say ten, why don't we say ten AM to twelve PM, subject to, you know, if it needs to get tweaked, if that's opening time needs to get shortened.
That's fine, to, to whenever it could open.
Yeah, so, all I look for, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to, I, I just, we get folks who come back in sometimes and need a, oh geez, we were going to have booked some, uh, bridal shower on a Saturday and, you know, from twelve to two, but we don't have the license to be open, that's just, you know.
Right.
What a pain.
Um, wouldn't we avoid any A B C C if we say ten AM to twelve PM on Sunday, eleven AM to twelve PM, all, twelve AM all other days? Does that, Brian, does that fix?
One more time, I'm sorry, I was trying to check.
So to avoid any A B C C, A B C, ABB?
A B C C.
Whatever, issues, on Sunday, ten AM to twelve AM?
Twelve PM, twelve midnight.
Twelve midnight.
Twelve midnight, good, and then, all other days, it would be eleven AM to twelve midnight, and I know you said four PM, but if you do have an event, like, why not have it so you could have it earlier?
Yeah.
That just, your hours are your hours, but it just gives some flexibility.
That's, that's great.
Does that work, Brian?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Very good.
What, what time are the other restaurants open to in the city?
Town.
Oh, town.
You have some that don't, oh, again, a lot of them do the same as you, four o'clock, and then depending upon the evening, weekend, they can be open until twelve, some of them open until ten, but you're right, but most of them don't open before four o'clock.
Right. I was just scared, I don't want, I don't want to be the late place that everybody goes to.
Cafe Italia doesn't.
Because everybody else closes at eleven, then they rush to us.
So you can close whenever the hell you want, yeah, right? It's, they're authorizing you to stay, if you need to sometime, that's it.
You can just argue that those places are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, Ed.
I think just, you know, one thing on this, I'm hearing you, we're talking about, you know, opening two new establishments, which I think is great, um, one consideration I have is, we're opening two new establishments serving alcohol, so it's nothing about your restaurant, but just in general, I mean, we have Chief Smith here, I'd be interested for any kind of feedback he might have in terms of, you know, from a staffing capacity and just from his, his experience and those of his officers, you know, um, i, i, we're just kind of arbitrarily, you know, saying, oh, do this or that, I don't know if, if we maybe get some input from him.
I don't think we're arbitrarily saying, these are hours that we've set for all other businesses, so I don't want to hamstring a new business coming in.
Oh, no, and I'm, I'm suggesting.
I've been there for ten years on the zoning board before six years.
Right, so I, yeah, I don't think we're being arbitrary, but.
So, so, wha, what is your?
I guess I would just be interested in, in Chief Smith's feedback, just generally, about, you know, not just this location, but also the, the last location we just, we just discussed.
Chief, you'll have to come to the table. If you want to answer, if you wish to answer any questions, you'll have to come to the table.
Unhealthy male, I can do that.
From my perspective, we're talking liquor licenses, I, I have nothing to do with food, Police Department has nothing to do with food, um, and I firmly believe the only way to do business is every liquor license, licensed establishment closes at the same time. If this board makes it nine-thirty, ten-thirty, eleven-thirty, twelve-thirty, I don't care what it is, just as long as everybody, every licensed establishment has the opportunity to close at the same time. So if one o'clock is closing time in Wakefield, it's one o'clock for everybody. If it's twelve-thirty, right now, we have, according to what I just saw, we have one establishment on one end of a parking lot closing at twelve, and another establishment on the other end of the same parking lot closing at twelve-thirty. Um, I've been around long enough, you know that I'm fair, that I, it's all about fairness, so I would suggest that whatever we do, whatever this board does, it's one time to close for every establishment. If you want to close at nine-thirty, that's, that's your prerogative, if you want to stay open until twelve, your, your competitor, because we're talking liquor licenses, a competitor's right across the parking lot, it should be fair and equal to everybody. So, I would suggest this board make a decision on closing time, and then everybody closes at that time, whether they want to close early or not, that's fine.
Good advice. What's the latest one out there, does it's twelve-thirty?
Twelve-thirty.
What's, um, what's?
One o'clock.
What's?
One o'clock.
One o'clock is allowed by the A B C C.
Oh, no, no, but what's our latest one, I don't, and if you don't know, is Oscars? If it's still called Oscars, I don't know.
My mother doesn't like.
Is Oscars like, isn't Oscars like three?
It's not still called Oscars. I'm getting up at three.
Whatever that.
I don't even know who has.
I mean, it makes it easier for the police department, is from a enforcement perspective, if we get a call that Restaurant X is open past their hours, we have to go look it up, we have to find out, we have to go back to the minutes, we, one o'clock, twelve o'clock, whatever it is, we know if you're open at twelve-thirty and we have a closing time at twelve o'clock, you're in violation, end of story, makes it easy, makes it easy and it's fair for everybody.
So Steve, could you provide the board with a list of the liquor stores?
We can do that, yep.
And what the times are right now that they're closing?
Yep.
And then if the board wishes to go down this road in the future, we can address it the next time we go around with the approval of the licenses?
Yes.
Would that be, at the right time to do it? If we want to make them all uniform?
So, but, I had the same question you did, Chief, why we did twelve o'clock for tequilas and twelve-thirty for fangs, because I was thinking the same thing, although fangs is hardly ever open that late, most of them aren't. Is there a way, based on what Chief Smith just said, can we?
Do you like some omnibus amendment to all of the liquor licenses?
Well, can we just do, we have the folks still here, we have the attorneys still here and the parties.
Oh, for both, just make them both twelve-thirties?
Can we make them both twelve-thirty, can we reopen the hearing?
That's what I'm, that's what, that's what I was kind of thinking.
Or make a motion to?
I, I'll, the, the, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, we have a licensed establishment that's open till one.
Right.
So, the problem is, if we make it at twelve-thirty, do we roll that one back, or do we move the twelve-thirties to one at a later date?
What's the one?
Harrington's.
Is it Harrington's?
See, that's why.
I think we have two, I can check, but I think we have two.
I don't know.
But, but, we have to send people to the A B C C, so it's not just like easy saying, each establishment has to send in people.
I would think just saying, one o'clock, I'm talking, talk about flexibility and want to have maximum flexibility, and if we had one o'clock as the shutdown time, then we know universally that's what it's going to be, and, and I think we're avoiding the issue you're talking about, Chief, of kind of people bouncing from one to another, because it kind of levels the playing field in, in that respect, which sounds like from a safety perspective would, would make sense. So, if there's a way, I don't know, Tom, is there a way that we can make the last one o'clock and offer the one o'clock as well, understanding they can do whatever they want, as long as that after one o'clock?
I don't think we can do anything about any licensee who's not represented here tonight.
Right, right, I mean, the last one, the, the first.
Yeah, tequilas.
Tequilas and, and, and.
I don't see why we can't, right.
Is that what we want to do though, do we want to go up all the ways to one o'clock with our licenses?
I.
I don't.
I mean, we already.
I, I understand, but I understand what the chief is proposing to, but I don't think I would want to make, go these two up to one o'clock just because we have one restaurant right now at one.
At least one.
We have at least one.
Right, yeah.
I, I would prefer getting that list and then making determination once we see the list of all the times, and make a conclusion based upon fact, not just two restaurants.
Well, but I, I think the point is that we know that at least one establishment is open to one, so why is that establishment able to be open to one, but why are we limiting twelve-thirty for, for these new establishments? It, it seems highly unfair.
Yeah, just, he just wants one, one AM, Wakefield's dry. Makes it real easy for his guys.
Makes it really easy for everybody, we all know, there's no arbitrary, you know, aspect to it.
I think one's too late.
I mean, Boston, the last call would be two.
This is not Boston, this is.
I know, but I'm saying, but that's what I'm saying, one o'clock.
You're going to have a liquor license till one o'clock, you'd have to change the, the eating time, ten, two would have to be bumped up from ten o'clock to, what, eleven, eleven-thirty? That you have to be serving food, if you're potentially going to be open till one o'clock, there's a lot of ramifications involved.
I don't think it's going to be open till one.
Let's get the lesson, Steve.
Well, we, actually, the board can do, make a recommendation and, and put a motion forward, whatever they want, and then the vote will come down to whichever way.
I'd, I'd do these two at one.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Because we're heading that way, if we want to change it later, so be it.
I think otherwise, we're, in a way, kind of picking winners and losers for, for businesses, because for that last half hour, why is it that these new guys should not be allowed to serve a drink at twelve-thirty-five, but another establishment can, that doesn't, you know, why, why are we picking, picking who can and cannot be operating?
Did you guys hear the comment Mr. Catarano made on that? I don't know if anybody picked it up.
He has children, he isn't going to be open, I heard that.
No, no, not that comment, he said, what time do bars close? I don't want to be the last one open that everybody comes to, you know?
That's what problems arise.
That's somebody's experience.
That's how we were in the North End, we were, we were one of two licenses at two, so in the beginning, everybody was rushing us, and we said, no, we close at midnight, go away.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, do we have any further comments on, from the board, on any matters pertaining to the license request at this time? Go ahead.
I just have some information for the board.
Go ahead.
So this is, I was able to access my treatise on the, on the hours, so Massachusetts state law in chapter one thirty-eight says restaurants cannot be barred from serving alcohol between eleven AM and eleven PM, so you have to let them be open from eleven to eleven. Um, the local license authority may grant extended opening hours between eight AM and eleven AM, if you want, um, or, um, between eleven PM and two AM, so two AM's, two AM's the latest you can go, and no event can sales of alcohol be made between two AM and eight AM. And as far as Sunday goes, um, I knew there was something on this, pouring license can open Sunday at twelve noon, the exceptions to this is if the local licensing authority accepts state, certain state law, so I think we have to accept it, Tom, um, that allows it, um, the licensing authority may authorize a restaurant, uh, hotel, club, or veterans' club to open as early as ten AM. So I think we, we would, if the licensing authority is the one that has to adopt that law, we'd have to figure out, it's not the town meeting.
Right, we've done that before, haven't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, you did?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can go as early as ten AM then on Sunday.
So we're back to hand, ten AM to one AM on Sunday, and eleven AM to one AM all the other days.
And if we want to be consistent.
I think.
And most restaurants will not stay open till one, I'm guessing, none of them do.
Just for that one night, they have an event, or your family's there.
Where's your last call for my family's tent?
Well, as the licensing authority, we also have the ability to dial those hours back if we think there's a problem, so if we say one AM is the cutoff because we have some one AMs, and that makes your, um, men and women, their job easier, does it?
I'm off of consistency across the board.
Yeah.
So if, I mean, the board can do whatever they wish, if, if we have a licensed establishment that's a problem, you can ratchet it back.
Yeah.
But I think in, in fairness going forward, um, you level the playing field, and if they fall off, then you as a licensing authority can decide, okay, you know, Rook Smith's bar's not going to be open till one o'clock in the morning anymore.
Right.
But where we have one license premise right now that we know of, there may be others.
I think there's two.
Um, it's easier to match that threshold than to scale them back.
All right.
I think it makes sense to be.
Again, uh, uh, Brian.
I moved.
Well, I have an open to the public, Brian, is the board done making comments? If they're so, is there any comments from the public? Please come to, Chief, could you allow the young man behind you to sit down and let him take the seat and, please state your name and?
Yep, my name's Henry Bottal, I'm the only residential butter against, uh, one ninety-five north Ave, I live at thirty-nine Armory Street, um, I've looked at the project since pretty much groundbreaking, I bought my property while it was being built, um, I looked at the property, I reached out to the, the majors and real estate companies to figure out if I wanted to purchase a property next to sixty units, and, uh, mixed use, and I was pretty excited about it, um, they've been excellent builders next to me, they've handled any of my complaints, I have no issues with that, I'm excited to hear about Tonos moving into the neighborhood, a nice restaurant, would be great, oven Italian food, um, so I'm pretty excited about that. My only reservation was when I got my notice on Wednesday that said there was a hundred and four people sitting outside, um, for four months out of the year, um, that pretty much doubles the capacity of the restaurant, um, and I'm thinking school night, not school nights, actually, school nights when we have a, um, multiple things going on at Galvin, you have my street, Armory Street, which is not two-hour parking, it's resident parking only, on along one side of the street, people park up and down that street anyways, uh, CVS, any parking space they can find, when you have three soccer fields going, the bull soccer field's going and a school event, whether it's band, family event going on, and now we're putting in two hundred seats next to sixty seats. You also get the added noise pollution of outdoor dining, even four months, a hundred people talking for four hours, or at night, can be disturbing to people who are used to lights going off at the Galvin School at midnight, at ten o'clock at night, when the rest of the activity in that neighborhood dies down. I have no problem with the small patio, you know, twenty, thirty people, um, I don't know sitting next to it walking my dog around that property every day, I don't know where you'd put a hundred and four pieces, people sitting on North Ave, even up and down, it's only about twelve feet between of pave, of, um, brick to the sidewalk, maybe fifteen, um.
That portion is not even built yet.
Yeah, but, I mean, still, you can see where it's not built, I mean, there's not a huge amount of space, so that questions, I just question that amount of people outside, uh, competing with all the other stuff going around, it, uh, in that area, that's my only concern, especially if it spills off onto Armory Street on that corner with the restaurants going.
I have a question on the patio, is it facing North Ave?
Majority of it is facing North Ave, there's, there's a piece of it that wraps down Armory about, does it have a dimension on here?
I don't see the patio going.
I'm good.
This is the patio?
Here's the piece that's on Armory, right, right there.
So, I mean, it's a pretty big piece on Armory, it's the whole, pretty much the whole side of the building, that's a residential street.
No, this is just, this is, this is thirty-some odd feet.
Yeah, that's the parking lot right there?
No, 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 this is, this is, this is a demising wall, the, the building's another two hundred feet back that way, and, and on Armory, there's six, twelve, twenty, maybe twenty seats on that exterior piece.
Okay. To me, it's still a lot of people on Armory Street in a, a typical residential street as it is now.
Mr. Chairman, I think what we've done in the past is, if there is, if there is a problem, if noise is a problem, if, if, then we can always revisit something. We can always revisit the amount of seats.
Putting the genie back into the bottle, though, is sometimes difficult.
We've had pretty good luck of tweaking restaurants, if there's things that.
Can, can you name me another restaurant in a residential area like this that you'd have to go back to?
Bellino's is in a residential area.
Uh, Bellino's, their patio is already on Main Street facing.
But I'm, I'm not going to kind of pin the game.
But if you tell me you can put the genie back in the bottle, I'm just asking for other examples where this type of establishment is in the town, so we have some idea.
We haven't had complaints from other establishments.
Okay, excellent. I'm not complaining. I'm just, I'm just, as a resident.
Showing your concerns, absolutely.
It's the butter questioning 30 seats being put next to my home. That wasn't part of a plan when I purchased the home.
Well, this, this pad, this patio's always been there. This, this is a permit drawing. This is a ZBA drawing since day one. And again, we're talking about 30 feet. Your, your house is, you know, 300 feet back, 400 feet, I mean.
Okay.
I mean, it's.
I'm not arguing. I'm just, I'm just like, I'm just nervous. If I had, if I had, if I had 150, if someone had 100, 100 people's dining next to their home four months a year from now until potentially, although you say you won't do it, but as business needs change, till 1:00 a.m., it gets kind of loud. I'm not, I'm not questioning, I just look at, if you're being business, uh, if you're looking to be business friendly and giving you, "We can do whatever you want in our town. We'd love to have you here, and your business is not doing well, and I want you to succeed tremendously." The building looks awesome, by the way. I'm not complaining about that. But I would complain if suddenly you are not doing well, so you start opening till 1:00, and now I have 100 people outside eating and drinking till 1:00 in the morning, next to a school, next to, you know, all the other residents on the street.
We've come to like a mutual agreement. It's part of the lease that the, like, the background music will, won't be more than background. We have a limit of 80 decibels on the, um, on the music, which is basically like background music. It's not going to be, um, it's about as loud as conversation. So the, the music won't, won't be loud. And then, you know, the kitchen closes at 10:00. So really, that, that's going to be outdoor dining and not someplace that somebody is going to be, you know, the, the bar area. So once, once dinner's over, these people would be gone, and then the containment would be inside at the bar, which we're, we're not promoting, and, you know, I know you said future business, the video worried about. If it ever gets to that point where I needed to stay open at 1:00, I, I would revisit, and that's not my, that's not what I do.
Different business model.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Brian.
There'd be a different meeting.
I could probably give you, I can't guarantee anything to your point, but I can give you some comfort. I went through the process of permitting Bellino's when they added their outdoor dining. It took months. We had neighborhood meetings. I mean, the, the entire neighborhood behind Bellino's rose up when they saw the proposal to put that porch on. And, and for good reason. They were very concerned. They had just, I don't know how, you've just, you've just moved here?
No, I've lived in Wakefield about eight years. I just moved to Armory Street.
Okay. So you know that the, the park across from Honeydew, that's a beautiful area with grass, that used to be a.
I, Mulhoney Island, I used to drink there underage.
He wasn't chief then, so.
No, no, I get that.
He would have caught you.
No, I get, I get all that. And I'm not trying to stipulate.
So I'm saying is, you went through this exact kind of process, and what we came out to, which is where, exactly where you're headed, is they're like, "We don't want people out there drinking and partying. It's not a bar." And I don't, but, so I quickly checked this plan. I don't see anything that's a bar outside. It's their dining tables, and that's kind of the spirit of the, the restaurant and what they want to do. And people sitting down, eating dinner outside isn't, typically isn't that loud. You might get somebody, you know, a person with a bad laugh or whatever. But it also seems like you, you're not right on top of the restaurants from what I can, I can see here either.
I am right next to the property, though.
Where are you on the, the plan then? Just help me out.
You can't, this is just a floor plan.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no, he's, if you, if you look at the key plan of the building, you see that at the top, there's a little hatched area that shows the space.
Yeah.
The building projects back, you know, another, the depth of the garage is, is probably another 100 some odd feet, then you get the, um, the 44, sorry, 24-foot drive aisle landscape buffer, and then Henry's house. So it's, it's a good distance away. I'm, I'm not going to say he's never going to hear, you know, somebody, you know, people talking at dinner, you know, especially if someone, like you said, someone has a lot of.
I, I live next to the school. I, I get that. I love hearing kids playing. I love hearing the rest blow. I have no problem with that. I understand what I signed up for when I bought the house. I just want to make it clear that I think, uh, a patio wraps around onto Armory Street. I think we're still business friendly if we doubling someone's restaurant space for outside patio, even though it's four months out of the year, is still a lot in that area. When you have all those.
I'm also in trouble with the count. It says 104 seats outside, and I, I kind of come up with 80. Is there some, is there a mistake on here? Probably the mistake is mine.
You're counting just the people. There's, there's other.
Oh, the other seating?
The other seating is fi, like, there's, there's these fire tables.
Couches and.
There's three fire tables with couch loungy type seating.
Yeah, I got another 14 there. Okay. Okay.
There's 16, there's 16 seats there. And then you have the ones that are on North Ave. What are tho, are those seats at the very front?
Yes. Those are four, those are four position seats.
Matt, what's the, uh, the width of the sidewalk on Armory and on North Ave?
North Ave, I believe, is just about eight feet, the actual right away. And then you get to the raised patio area with the, with the rail. And I think it shrinks down on, um, on Armory to five or six.
Is that raised as well, too? Is that grade?
No, it's raised as well. You can see that, actually, there's a handicap ramp that ties into getting you adapted.
At the upper part, on the eastern side. I see it.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just point out, I mean, just, when, when this project was permitted, my zoning hat comes on, because what's interesting, when you look at this property, this whole strip, including this gentleman's house, all the way down to Main Street is all business owned. And, you know, when I looked at this process, I, I was kind of like, wow, how did some of these, not that they don't deserve their piece, you know, no matter what, where they are, but it's just interesting because it's almost like sometimes you say, people will say, "How did this, how did this business get in this residential area?" And when I looked at some of this stuff, I said, "How'd this residential get into the business area?" Because that whole strip, West Water and Armory, all the way down, is all business owned. I was amazed by it.
Ed.
Just a question for the butter. Is, so I want to go through you, Mr. Chairman, but, appreciate. Is the, the, the concern about the hours that the patio would be open, or the fact there's a patio at all?
No, like I said, I think any business, and I think, looking at the property, they definitely, on North Ave, a patio would be perfect. I'd probably be the first one over there, especially in walking just into my house. I'm very excited about it. My, my just the expansion, just the size of the sheer patio that they want to put in for this, it seems to be a bit big for the neighborhood.
I guess I understand if we're talking about 1:00 a.m. as being the shutdown. I could understand, for example, hey, no patio after midnight or something like that. From a noise perspective, I get that. And I think that's something we may want to consider just generally, but, you know, as a kind of standard operating procedure, but, and I understand your concern as well, sir, so I'm not trying to minimize that.
I'm not trying to shut down the, the restaurant. I think it's an awesome idea.
I love restaurants.
I'm in there all the time. But it, it just comes down to, on Armory Street, we still have, you know, I know he said it's zoned for families. The house, my house, I guess, built in 1939, 1933, so at some point, the switch was there, but these houses were there a long, long time as well, established residential neighborhood as well.
It just gets tricky with the zoning piece of.
No, no, I get it. I mean, if you want to get business done, you make a thing, so.
Tony, go ahead.
Uh, first of all, if you were underage drinking, Mulhoney Island, that was probably the best thing going on there. Anthony, if I hear you correctly, there's probably zero probability you're going to be open at 1:00 in the morning.
Right.
If I, you know, can read through the lines, there's. We're not a drinking community. You know, Wakefield's, Wakefield's dead at 12:00.
Yeah.
I mean.
No, it is. No, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with any of it. I mean.
I mean, I understand the concern, sir, but, you know, where was this, the, the zoning board when, when they approved it?
You're right. I was not a butter at that point.
Because this is kind of a, you know, almost like the electrical, uh, National Grid project we went through. This is kind of, you know, late in the game. And I understand it. And I totally, you know, I have total faith in Anthony, if kind of, you know, if it does get a little loud, you know, when it is late, then he'll, you know, reel it in. You know, and, and again, you're, you're father, if I heard you correctly?
No.
Matt's the father.
No, we're both out.
Okay, both, okay.
Yeah.
You're going to, you want to be home.
Yeah.
You don't want to be out at 1:00 in the morning, or, you know, having to clean up the kitchen and get home at 2:00 or 2:30 in the morning, and, and get up and do it all again. So.
We, we also have the residents above us that we're going to be contending with.
Yeah.
We're going to get the complaint.
No, I agree with that 100%.
So, and, and we're, we're going to want to keep, keep those people just as happy as the rest of the community, because it's a big part of the business plan to have the community in the restaurant, so.
But also, to your point, Mr. Longo, I don't want to come back to the board in six months if there is a complaint. Have you turned to me and say, "Where were you six months ago when we were doing?"
No, I get it. I get it. Thanks, Henry.
The thing back, so. It goes both ways.
Yeah.
That's an excellent point. That was one of the best ones for this conversation. I think that the 60 families that are moving in and paying some solid change, they will definitely be helping to police. I mean, you have some great points, though, as in butter. I'm not taking away from that at all.
They're all paying more than I paid for my home.
The window's open, right?
Right.
You know, I, I, if I'm buying a condo and spending 500, 600,000, and every night in the summer, I'm hearing screams and yells and whatever, and disturbing sounds, that's going to be a real problem. And they'll be, they'll be on top of you guys.
No question about it.
So I think that'll certainly help. It's not going to resolve everything, but it's just that, that's, that's a really big point.
No, and just so you know, my recommendation to the board is to approve it. I just wanted to get my.
No, you have a good point. I know.
My, my concerns.
Sure, before it's finished and then move forward, yeah. Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Bottal. Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to go back to the board. Do we want to close the public hearing first, or do we want to make a decision first?
I would be approved, though, like, with hours, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. all the other days of the week.
We have motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just think the idea of having this more as a standard operating procedure for us makes a lot of practical sense, and it doesn't pick favorites in our town.
Vote. All favor? Vote. Go ahead. Discussion.
I don't know if now's the right time, but I, um, because I hear about Armory being residential, and I'd just love an update before the liquor, like, before we do the annual liquor license or something, just about how the noise is going. Because I, I do, I, I do worry about outside seating on a residential area, and I, you know, I'm not an expert at reading this, and I didn't serve on ZBA, so North Ave makes sense to me. There's cars going by, just like Bellino's, it faces the street. But I want to know for those, for the residents that do live there, how loud it gets. And I hear people living in the condo, um, but I love outdoor seating. I know it gets loud. And, and 9, 10 o'clock is still late, right? Like, that's still, so I don't, if there's a way we can ask for an update in a couple of months, I'd really appreciate that.
Any other discussion? All in favor? One abstain?
A finding?
Excuse me?
Need a finding since it's near a school?
Uh, we have to have the paperwork again?
Yeah.
Yes. What was the vote on?
Six in favor, one abstain. I abstain. Um, because I'm not in agreement to it. So I'm not voting no. I'm just abstaining. I don't like the 1:00.
Let this phone know. He can say no.
Ladies and gentlemen, I vote, I abstain. And that's the way the votes go on down. The ne, the next.
I know that we had already dealt with tequilas, but in light of our discussion, do we have the ability to level the playing field for them as well, and do this, have the same hours that we've just approved?
Maybe after we take care of this one matter, then we can probably address it if Tom says it's okay.
Okay.
But right now, we have a, a different public hearing.
That's why, point of where you're just asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's continue with the next item on here. We have to have a motion to, the Wakefield Board of Selectmen has determined that the licensing of all alcohol relating to the premises of 175 North Ave, Wakefield, Massachusetts, is not detrimental to the educational and spiritual activities of any school or church.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Is there a victory of this license?
Yes. We also need a motion to approve a victory's license for 175 North Ave. Moved and seconded. We also need a motion for an entertainment license for 175 North Ave.
Do you need them separate?
We usually do two separate motions, don't we?
We had.
You did.
We're doing.
We didn't vote on the victory.
You didn't vote on the victory's license. You jumped right to the motion to the next one. There's a motion on the floor for victory's license.
Motion for victory's license. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for, uh, entertainment license at 175. Motion, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that should take care of all four matters for you?
Yes.
Uh, we need to close the public hearing. All in favor? First, we need a motion?
Motion to close the public.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Congratulations. You need to sign this. What's that? Brian, stick around so we can do, um, the, the other one. Can we go, Tom, can we go back in?
Yeah. Since the applicant and their attorney is still here, I think you can go back and, and amend your vote.
Do we have to open the hearing?
No reason to open the public hearing, because you are not going to take any additional testimony.
Okay. Excellent. So, um, don't let your clients leave. We're going to do, um, tequilas.
Yeah.
Tequila's restaurant. Yes. What's that? This is live. I know. Brian, can we do a real quick amendment, please?
Yes.
That one, yeah, back to the, um, Ed, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, so I, I'm looking to make a motion to change the hours of operate, or the alcohol hours to, what's it, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m.?
Yeah.
Seven days a week.
So moved.
What about Sunday?
Uh, and Sunday's from, it's 10:00 a.m. until, until midnight? Or 1:00, 1:00 a.m., 1:00 a.m., yeah.
Second.
Any further discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Same thing on this one, abstain.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Yes. Brian, could you ask the light commissioners when you walk?
Did we open the hearing? Or did we close it?
Nope. What else do we have on this, on the, besides that? We have, um, Dee, we have Tom Holland to do. We have, um, Betsy to do, and we have, um.
You guys do outnumber them. You can do whatever you want.
Yeah.
Do we outnumber?
Historically, we have deferred.
Yeah.
Are they not up there?
Two cell class in each other.
Yeah.
Well, Betsy's outside, too, so we can do that.
I can do my warrant.
I'll try to do the warrant.
Well, Tony. Uh, I signed a lot of veterans assistance, signed some supplies for hard hardware, office supplies, um, you know, signed some bills for the school lunch program, debt service, and basic town bills.
Good job.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good report.
No problem. Can't wait till that's over and done with. Members who are going to speak, could you please have a seat at the table?
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
How are you today?
Nice.
Excellent.
Relaxed.
So we're here to discuss the, um, appointment to the commissioners until the town meeting, I mean, um, town election. And do we have a discussion from the light department on that matter?
Yes. I have, uh, four votes for Raphael McDonald.
Members of this board, is there any questions or concerns? Ed?
I'll just say, I, I went through all the resumes, and Raphael McDonald's resume stood out to me. I think he seems very, very qualified, and has great experience, certainly. I know that one thing where we had been focused on is, is this someone who would potentially be running or not. Do we, do we have an answer to that question?
He has not pulled papers.
Okay. And do we know whether there's an attention to, or?
I don't believe so. We made it pretty clear to anybody to put in their name, but.
Right. But, yeah, I mean, he seems to be, you know, qualified.
Any further questions?
Does that make a motion that we nominate Raphael McDonald?
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. Combined boards, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing no opposition. All set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other?
Oh, no. Is that all we got? Why don't you get, um, Kevin Gill?
Kevin Gill, or do we want to Betsy?
Either one. They're all waiting outside.
More afraid of Betsy.
Would you say you're more afraid of this?
More afraid of Betsy.
Yeah, I think so. I, I agree. Yeah, I think so, I, I agree.
That's a good idea. Don't want to talk too much.
Ms. Sharon?
I caught a movie while I was waiting.
Yeah. So that means you'll be really-
Yeah, you wish.
Oh.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm in, no, no. Say when.
Um, right now, we are going to discuss centralized voting authorization from the town clerk to centralized voting at the Galvin Middle School, 525 Main Street, beginning on Tuesday, September 4th, 2018, and include all local, state, federal election henceforth. Ms. Sharon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, something I'd like to also explain to the public, the viewing public, that on Tuesday, August 15th, I mailed, sent an email to Tommy Mullin, asking for his official opinion as to what body would have the jurisdiction to make this change. And he opined that it would be the Board of Selectment, and suggested I call Michelle Tassaneri in at the Secretary of State's office, which I did. I followed up, and that, in fact, is, is the way it should be done, by the Board of Selectment, not by a ballot question or any other way. Ergo, I'm here. As I said, this was back in August. And if the agenda item meets with your approval, the registered voters of Wakefield, as Mr. Denarko said, would be voting at the Galvin Middle School, 525 Main Street, beginning Tuesday, September 4th, 2018, and continuing. Each of the seven precincts will be separate. This is not putting everybody all together. It would be as if you were going to town meeting to check in there, by your precinct, as it has been in the past. Registered voters will remain in their assigned precincts, and there will be no consolidation whatsoever of individual precincts. Centralizing the precincts will be more efficient, will eliminate the confusion that has occurred in the past, when new residents were unfamiliar as to where they should go and vote. On another note, last year, we were faced with the dilemma when the state changed an election to a Thursday night, and precincts one and seven that voted at the Masonic Meeting Hall, that was not available that evening. And but for Steve Mayo and Bill Chapman, we solved the situation in about an hour, but I'll tell you, it created quite a bit of concern, to say the least. In choosing the Galvin Middle School, I considered all of the positive aspects, its central location, it's well-known to the residents, the site is on a bus route, unlike precincts two, three, five, and six, and finally, the building is, in fact, owned by every taxpayer in this community. They're paying for that building for years, and they should be able to go in and see it, because some of the people haven't had that chance. The families that have children who attend the middle, Galvin Middle School have been in there, people that go to town meeting have been in there, but I will guarantee you that there's quite a few residents and taxpayers in this town that have not set foot in the Galvin building, and I think this is a chance to showcase it, and to visit it. In order to comply with mass general law, the site must be approved by the Secretary of State's office. If this agenda item passes tonight, Town Administrator and I are going to meet with a designee from Secretary of State Galvin's office, and get the final stamp of approval. It, the Galvin Middle School complies with American Disabilities Act, and parking will not be an issue, and in order to avoid any confusion, a police officer will be assigned to the parking lot, and signage will be posted. In order to set this in motion and comply with mass general law, every registered voter will be notified of the change. This is the law. The notification must arrive at least 20 days before the election. Not only will every registered voter be notified by mail to her or his residence, I'm also going to have a flyer put in the MLD light bills in August, and there would be postings on social media, the town's website, and in the local newspapers. I'd also like to have a banner going across Main Street, which would be right there anyway. This change will also eliminate some voters' concerns with regards to voting at a polling place that offends their personal beliefs. One of my duties and responsibilities as town clerk is to see that each and every registered voters, voter has the opportunity to exercise her or his right on Election Day. Having the polls in one site in a municipal building is one way of providing the voter with a site that doesn't create any angst on to this particular voter's beliefs. Believe it or not, I have people that do not want to vote in the Most Blessed Sacrament Hall. I also have people that do not want to vote in the Masonic Temple Hall. I have people that do not want to vote in precincts four and, five and six, because there is liquor being served in one section of the building at some point during the day, and the same holds true for precincts two and three. These people have come to me, not, not a whole lot of them, and I'm not kidding about that, but they have come and expressed their concern. What they didn't know was that they would be able to vote in an absentee ballot, because it offended them. And they didn't, so they've been deprived of their right to vote. I've listed the main points, oh, on another note, since New England weather is mercurial at best, the Galvin Middle School is equipped with a generator, should electricity or power be lost. A representative from the ID Department will be on-site to correct any issues that may or may not arise. I've listed the main points for my request. There are several other issues I'm not going to go into, but my Cracker Jack staff and I will face them on Election Day, and they'll be addressed immediately. We won't be driving all over town trying to settle little problems that happen. Voting is a right and a privilege. My goal is to have each election proceed seamlessly and efficiently. I've consulted with the Superintendent of Schools, Kim Smith, Dr. Kim Smith, and the logistics are in place. Students will not be reporting to school on September 4th, the building will be empty. Also, they have altered one of their meeting dates to have an off-site day when there will be no school, and that will be November 6th, so the school is going to be empty for the first year. Now, reading votes in their schools with the students there, but the first year, and we may have to tweak a few things, but I'm telling you, this is not a matter of saving tons of money. This is a matter of making it more efficient, because my main job is to make sure that every registered voter in this community has the opportunity to exercise their right. So I'd like to thank Superintendent Dr. Smith and Town Administrator Mayo for their support and cooperation, and that's it.
Thank you.
Betsy, I'm so glad to hear there's no school, at least for the first year.
Right.
What about events, like soccer practice and all that? That generates a lot of cars often, because it's the younger kids.
It does.
Can we say?
Well, I would say that we're going to have at least one policeman, if not two, in the parking area to get people in and out. That's the first thing.
Or even suggest that, that night?
Yeah, they back off a little bit.
Yeah.
But the bulk of voting is done. All right, there's a primary, and there are going to be contests, partisan contests.
Yeah.
All right. The bulk of the voting is done from 7:00 in the morning till about 9:00.
Oh, okay.
Then there's a lull, really, all day long.
Yeah.
And then in the evening, on the way home from work, maybe from 4:00 to 6:30. That's the other, you know, big push. Then you get the stragglers. Well, I shouldn't call them stragglers, the people that, I apologize.
Voting stragglers.
The people that can't get there, you know-
Right.
-in, in the prime times, as it were, are the people, it just dawned on them, oh my God, you know, today's Election Day.
I think it sounds great.
Thanks.
Great idea.
Yeah, I'm a big fan of this. This is great. This is my day job, I work on making it easier for people to vote. When I was on Charter Review Commission, this was a proposal. I think having four different places in a town the size of Wakefield never made sense to me. Having one localized place will make it easier for everyone.
Very good. Brian?
I miss Betsy being on the board. That was awesome.
I miss, I miss you people too, honest to, I really do, you know?
Just, I mean, so unlikely to be prepared and thorough, and-
I know, yeah, right. Right, 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 thank you, Brian.
I think it's, I think it's just long overdue, that, there's a comment, so, good job.
And as far as people traveling, and I saw that in the paper tonight, from my former school committee co-colleague, Charlie McCauley, when the people at Say Hartz Hill voted before, they went right to the Franklin School, which wasn't all that far away, now they have to get across town over to the Three Seas. I've lived here for almost 50 years, and I've voted in four different places, there's always going to be somebody on the outskirts, and there's always going to be somebody that lives across from the polling place. That's a given, but I think this is the fairest way to do it for everyone, and transportation will be addressed. And, you know, I don't want to get into it tonight.
I do have a, a real question, so that was, I support-
You mean, missing me wasn't real?
No, no, it wasn't a question, it was a statement.
All right, let's stay with you.
Do we, do we have to set the location as a board, or can we, I don't even know that I would want to do it tonight, but do we delegate, can we delegate that to the clerk? Hey, find a good location, or, I mean, it seems interesting that we're picking Galvin, like, maybe, maybe she wants to do it at the high school sometime, or she should just come back, or, how do you?
Well, you can always look to the town clerk for a recommendation, but the decision where to do the polling is this board's.
Okay, so we, we are going to set it tonight, subject to approval by the Commonwealth?
Right.
Okay.
Tony?
It's something I've been pushing for, for the past year and a half. There is no more central location in Wakefield than the Galvin Middle School. It is really in the heart of Wakefield. There's also going to be savings, a cost savings with efficiencies, I would believe.
Eventually, but that's not, I hate to say it.
It's, it's not what I'm, I just want, you know, to Marine's point, I want everybody to have the ability to vote.
That's right. That's my main concern. After that, yeah, we're going to save a few dollars, here and there, it's no question.
Concessions, Dan, Tony.
No. No concessions.
You can be, you're in charge of that.
There'll be none of that.
But as far as some of the field, I don't think there'll be any games going on, there may be some soccer practices, and, you know, the cars will be minimal, but thank you for your time, and I never had you on the board.
I know, and how unfortunate for you.
Ed?
I just have a few questions, actually. I'm curious to know what the cost savings are.
I can't give it to you right now, and I'll tell you why. Number one, instead of having, and with all due respect to the police chief that's behind me, we've had a policeman, they meet with me at quarter of 6:00 in the morning at my office, because the voting machines are locked in my office. They come and transport them to the four different polling places. So policemen are on duty from quarter of 6:00, oh, probably 5:30 in the morning till at least 8:30 at night. Instead of having four separate situations, and nobody's working 14 hours, I can tell you that, we'll have one policeman there. So there's going to be a savings there. It's not what I aim to do, but it's going to be the result of it. I'll also have a policeman in the parking lot, and that's fine as well, and maybe two. Cost savings, you're going to see the same number of people working at the polls, you're going to, no, it's more for efficiency than money, and for once, I'm not here about money. It's more for efficiency, and as I said, my main thrust is to make sure that every registered voter in this town can go and feel comfortable where they're voting, and be able to exercise their constitutional right. So as far as money goes, hit me on my budget if you want me to save some money, don't hit me on this. I guess that's what I'm saying, and I'm not trying to be flip to you.
I guess-
But I didn't go into this trying to save a few bucks. I really didn't.
I guess the question, the two other questions, one of them is related to the traffic, I know that, especially in those peak hours you've mentioned, at any of the polling places, there's a good amount of traffic you're going to see at any one of those locations now, so I, I'm wondering that, say, like, the morning, for example?
Yeah.
What the morning commute is like already on, on Main Street?
Mm-hmm.
Has there been any thought given to that, and what that's going to look like if you're-
Not by me, it hasn't. I'm going to be very honest with you. Number one, I cannot tell you any time of day when there isn't traffic, either on Route 95, Route 128, Main Street here, or any other place. We're a mobile society. Instead of cars, families having one car, every member of the family has a car that can drive. This is something that I think is important, and I think it's on the bus route, people can take public transportation there, and we're going to have, hopefully, shuttles, as we have before, but I think that there is no place worse to park, or to give directions to, than the West Side Social Club, I'll tell you that right now. The next worst place is probably the Three Seas, my home polling place, Most Blessed Sacrament. It's in the middle of a neighborhood, almost, do you know what I mean? And the best place to park probably is the Masonic Temple, but that's all out in the back, you know? So I'm not, I'm not worried about traffic, and I'm not worried about parking, I'm really not. I have no control over traffic, and don't claim to. Parking, we can, we can keep it. I'm a very organized person, and I can line it up. We're going to have to tweak some things, I know we are, Mr. Demirovsky, but I really believe that this is well worth trying. I think, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't offer this to the voters in this town, the registered voters in this town. This isn't Mayberry RFD, this is not 1950 Wakefield any longer. This is a very interested society of voters, this, these, this is a society of people that want to become involved regardless of their age, quite frankly, and I think we have to, we, my office and my position has to be to afford people this, this opportunity. That's how I feel.
I guess I'm just not convinced that by eliminating polling locations, we're going to actually increase access to voting. I realize we're centralizing it, but I think central, centralizing something and allowing, and creating access, I think are two very different things, and when you have multiple locations, most of those locations are probably closer to a voter's home than the middle, than the junior high is.
That's not true.
No.
I, I live in Greenwood, and I vote at the Three Seas, Most Blessed is much closer to me, so-
Well, I mean, that, that might be, that, that's a, that's a different issue to be had.
It's precincts three, four, five, I mean, there's a lot of precincts.
Yeah.
I think there's, I, I, we can find, I can probably find you data that if you have one location, and you don't have to explain to everyone, hey, you, where do you live? What precinct do you live in? Nobody knows what precincts they live in.
Yes.
What street do you live in? Okay, let me look it up, this is where you vote. If we, as a town, can say, everyone goes to the Galvin Middle School, it will increase voter turnout.
Yep.
I, no question. And Betsy, how's the data? Look at, last time when we did early voting, one location, everyone went to town hall. Every day, there was a line out the door, people knew. Hey, you want to early vote? Go to town hall. The messaging just makes it so much easier, and it does increase voter turnout.
I, I would also have to say, excuse me, I would, I, you don't agree with me, and we're going to-
No, 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 no.
I just was going to ask-
I'm just, I'm thinking about like-
What your suggestion might be, not that-
Yeah.
But I thi, I think I would have to say that I think we would be remiss, I think this board would be remiss if they didn't authorize this, and have us move forward, Town Administrator and myself move forward, and, and move towards modernizing it, move towards, a call comes through to my office, and I have four ways that I can get to a problem that needs to be solved immediately. I may hit traffic, I may get there when the person is so fed up and frustrated, they've I may hit traffic. I may get there when the person is so fed up and frustrated they've left. You know, if it happens there, I'm right there. One of my staff is right there. We're there to answer any problem and to eliminate any frustration and any angst that any of the voters may have. And I really feel that way. People that even vote within the community, move within the community, Ed, they'll go to their old polling place and it may have been changed because they haven't read some of the wonderful literature that gets sent from my office. They go to their old polling place and it might be seven thirty at night. I'm sorry, you don't vote at Most Blessed Sacrament anymore. You're over at the Masonic Hall. I'm not going. I'm not going. It's too far. It's across town, the whole bit. So, but if I said, gee, you're right down there at the three tables away, you'll get on and vote. I think this is all about the voter.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, again, going back to the central location and just that, I've seen the traffic in the morning there and I think most of us probably have, and I think it's a legitimate concern because I've seen the traffic at each of the polling places. And at any one polling place, you have a good amount of traffic. I'm thinking someone drives by, say, I'm not waiting in that line, you know, to even pull into the place. So I'm just not convinced that it's going to achieve the goal.
Then I would have to convince you that voting is very important and that you should come in. Also, we're open for thirteen hours.
Oh, I get it, but in practical terms, what, we have two narrow windows in the morning and the evening, basically. Where a majority of the people have the ability to vote, so I mean...
But if it's important enough, they'll go and they'll go into that parking lot and they will go in and they will check into their... Trust me, honest to God, they will. They will.
Brian?
Just, I guess, don't forget too that the, it's disturbing to me, the idea that people are offended by going into a church or a place that serves alcohol. And when I say disturbing, I'm not bothered with them. I agree with them.
Right, right, right.
It's really kind of, in this day and age, it's kind of amazing that we still vote in a church, you know, or a church building. It's just kind of... So I think fixing those issues are probably, you're playing at a way higher level. Constitutional issues.
Absolutely.
Way, way higher level than the cost of a detail or a machine. The other thing that is really interesting here, and you kind of touched on it, is do you think election security might be important these days? So I think not having our machinery dispersed and in different areas monitored by different people is only going to become a more important consideration in our society.
Absolutely.
And so I think it makes a ton of sense to have the people who are in charge of overseeing the election and making sure it's administered properly and fairly, sitting on top of, in a room where you could literally see every machine, the entire, all thirteen hours.
That's right.
Right? I just think there's a lot of value to that and the police protection in the room. Don't back down on the details. Add more, you know, make sure it's a safe, comfortable place.
It has to be. Also, if you're interested in saving a few bucks, which I'm not.
Not. I pay more for this.
No, I know you're not. Restore the polling booths. We have to hire a big truck to transport them every single time. I'm going to look for space down at either the Galvin or the Americal Civic Center, which is the next closest place, to store them forever in a day and we won't be, and they can just move them in.
DPW or Kytron.
Yeah, exactly. And be done. Be done with it, or, and be done with it, you know? So there's a, but it's pennies compared to the importance of a person going to exercise his or her constitutional right.
Peter?
So, Betsy, I think it's a great job. I think the board in general is really happy about getting one location after all these years. And the confusion, as I think Marine started with, with just what precinct do you even live in? Where do I go? Did a change from, you know, nineteen seventy-three. Everything sounds very positive and everyone's points are good, and I think Ed brings up some points too that, you know, local people like to have local things, but I think it's time probably for a change to have one location. But is there anything in your research that you've discovered that, is there any downside to this that you're worried about? Anything that you personally worried about that you haven't already addressed?
I would have discussed it with Steve Mayo prior to this. I would have talked to Tommy Mullin about it and I sure as heck would have gotten ahold of Michelle Tassinarian, spoken with her about it. I'm not worried about it.
Sure.
I'm very positive about it. I've had Steve this morning come in. I said, I'm not going to show you my thing. I said, play the devil's advocate. Ask me, give me any negative thing that you possibly can.
Right.
And he sat in my office and we were good to go, actually, this morning. We talked about, this is something I wanted when I was on this august board.
Sure.
All right? It's day is, has come and I don't want it to go.
Sure.
And this is the time to do it. And I'll be working with the schools because I have to have the dates ahead so they can set their calendar. So those schools are empty. No, God forbid with some people, there might be kids in there. Believe me, we can work around it. Reading does it all the time.
It's good to see you have some passion too about being town clerk and getting this done. It's good that you have some passion. I haven't really, never seen that before.
Passion, I haven't got any strength left. I haven't been up this late in weeks.
Yeah. Thank, yeah, thank you very much.
Just very quickly on the traffic. As someone who did pick up and drop off at that place, it's built to have different traffic lanes. It's laid out so much better than the West Side Social Club where it's like, come, you know, where do I park? So I'm confident that the police can have two ways traffic. They can park people in the back. Will it look crowded? Yes, but I, you know, the Galvin drop off manages to happen every day.
There's no school to park them at.
Right, so, but even if people are coming in a lot, I just don't think, I don't think it's going to be as crazy traffic wise.
For this year, but I'm saying like the spring elections, wanting to give out more. That might be the trickier election to not have school going on.
The town election will probably be held, it could be held during February, during April vacation.
Which it has been in the past.
But, which it has been, right before.
Sure.
So I mean, but I've got enough lead time for that. Steve will always say, and you always say it to me, I don't play checkers. I play chess. All right? And I am always, you always say it.
When I say you play chess, why others are playing checkers? That's exactly.
That's a different saying.
When someone's only thinking there for us. I fully understood what you meant.
I'm always looking ahead. Always. I'm not even thinking about, because everything's in place for this April. I'm always looking down the road as well as, you know, you have to juggle things and do what's in the present as well. But things are very, if nothing else, I'm organized. I will tell you that, Ed. You have no idea. You'd eat your dinner holding on to your plate. If I were around because I'd be grabbing stuff, I am. I'm very organized. I really am. Trust me on this. Will we have to tweak it? Sure. Are there going to be people that aren't going to like it? Absolutely. But I'm not going to debate this on Facebook. I'll tell you that right now.
Debate nothing on Facebook.
Zero.
What's Facebook?
Okay. No, I'm just not going to, everyone's going to be entitled to their opinion. No matter what, any board vote, any vote that a board makes you alienate someone. There's always someone that's displeased. But I'm looking at what I think the great majority in this town will be. And don't worry about the, the location and the distance of people. I've got some thoughts about that. I really do. It's very important to get people to the polls. And I want to get it in place before we get hit with the 2020 presidential. You know?
Marine?
I just, I was supportive of all that Betsy's trying to do and I actually think this might be an issue where a little behind the curve because I'm thinking Linfield, North Reading, Melrose, Reading, you said, all have centralized voting.
Stonemum?
Stonemum. I didn't know Stonemum did, so I was trying to go through my... So again, my parents moved to North Reading. They go to Town Hall. You live in Melrose, you go to Town Hall. Reading, you go to a high school. So we're actually behind the curve a little bit on this where everyone else has found one central location. Highlight our middle school. It's the time to do it.
Well, Betsy, I supported you in the past. I'll support you today.
As well you should.
I think centralizing was a great idea back then. It just wasn't the time for it. Now, apparently with the new Galvin, it's a good time to push this forward. With that being said, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the proposal as presented by the town clerk regarding the moving and centralizing of the voting place to the Galvin Middle School as stated in her report.
So moved second.
Moved second. Is there all in favor? Aye. Posed. Hearing none. Thank you very much.
It's been real. Thank you.
Beg you. Okay, what's the next thing?
Give up the videos. I only work with dogs.
Mr. Gill, would you like to take the hot seat?
Did you say he was going to provide just some highlights of changes in the budgets?
Nah, he's doing the police budget. This one, we're going to be here until midnight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, we're going to review three of the public safety budgets. We have Chief Smith here from the Police Department. We'll be reviewing his budget tonight. I'll do a quick overview and if there's specific questions or if the chief would like to make remarks, we can do so after the quick overview. This budget for fiscal two thousand and nineteen, we are recommending an increase of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars over last year's budget. This breaks down, the increase in personal services, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars is an increase for contractual and negotiated increases. The, there is an increase in contractual services of fifty-four hundred dollars. This breaks down, there was a decrease in radio maintenance of thirty-five hundred dollars. There was a one-time purchase of equipment in the current year that we will not have that expense next year. We have an increase in computer maintenance software for fifty-five hundred dollars. This is for a software upgrade. We have a couple of small increases under hired equipment, three hundred dollars, mainly used for office equipment. We increased the advertising line item, six hundred dollars, which is used for media relations. And there was an increase in the telephone line item of twenty-five hundred dollars and that was based on current year usage. Under materials and supplies, there's an increase of seventeen hundred, sorry, seventeen thousand, two hundred dollars. There's an increase of twenty-two hundred dollars in medical supplies, which is used for the increased cost in usage of Narcan. And under the public safety supplies, there was an increase of fifteen thousand dollars, which is used for the TASER program. There is a one-time cost within this fifteen thousand, which is for the cost of four TASERS. Nine thousand dollars will be an annual recurring charge. And under sundry charges, there is a decrease of fifty-five hundred dollars. In two thousand and eighteen, there was a one-time assessment from NMLAC for the command post vehicle. The total budget request for two thousand and nineteen is five million, seven hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars.
We have a...
Why don't you take a motion and then we can talk?
Right. During discussion. We have a motion on the floor for the police budget in the amount of five million, seven hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and fifteen. We have a motion.
So moved.
Motion and moved and seconded in discussion. Tony?
You had quite a day, Chief, today. A little bit of excitement in town. I have a daughter at the middle school. Are those schools safe?
Absolutely.
Do you need more?
Do I need more?
To keep those schools safe?
I always need more.
I know you always need more.
Well, I'll give you the numbers. Right now, we're three officers short. A year from now, before those three ever graduate from the academy, if they make it, I'll be six officers short. It's the price of doing business. Their retirement, so we do the best with what we can. Right now, we're forty-four officers. The reason was, the last officers we put in the academy, two of them washed out. And the other one, well, we lost another officer to the state police. So, can I guarantee that the schools are safe?
There are no guarantees left.
I can't guarantee anything, but I can tell you from what experience today, the schools in this town are in great hands.
Excellent.
We, we had an incredible operation today that involved an incredible amount of resources from, and the reason we were able to bring those resources in is because of the collaborative agreement that we have with the SAG unit, with NMLAC, with our own personnel, with surrounding communities. We drill, we train, we work constantly. But I have to give incredible, an incredible amount of kudos to the vocational school staff. They were phenomenal. The superintendent up there was phenomenal. And because of the relationship we have up there, we're going home safe today.
Do we, how often do we do Alice drills?
I'm sorry?
How often do we do Alice drills?
During, during the course of the year, we do them at least once and then we need them as needed. We're going to be revisiting that. We had a conversation, we did the after action this afternoon. We'll be revisiting that at the vocational school again.
Okay. I would like to be invited the next time we do that as a spectator. Thank you. And thank you in your offices for everything you do out there. Because it is so much more, you know, it's not traditional, you know, cops and robbers and, you know, bank robberies. It's, you guys take on a whole bunch of other, you know, stuff that I can't even put my arms around when I hear some of the stories. But thank you for everything you do and your offices.
Thank you.
Other comments in the board?
Chief, you mentioned, we were talking the other day and you mentioned that the price of Narcan has almost doubled in the past year. Is that something that's budgeted? I mean, is there something we can do? Are there grants or something that we can apply for to get more Narcan?
We actually put money in the budget to offset that. Here's, here's the deal with the Narcan. The Narcan went from about thirty-some odd, thirty-two dollars a dosage unit to roughly seventy-six dollars a dosage unit halfway through the fiscal cycle. We buy Narcan through the state through a grant. The state has a grant. The problem, I'm not worried about the cost of it. I'm worried about how much we use. Every time, last year we had seventy-five overdoses. We had eight fadals. On those seventy-five overdoses that we had last year, we administered most of the time two, three, and four dosage units of Narcan. Where the year prior, it was one. Many of these are repeat customers, unfortunately. This year, we've had eight overdoses today, three of them over the weekend, and we've had one fatal. So if you look at the numbers, the numbers are starting to crawl up. Now, the governor came out last month and he touted that the fatalities are down. He's correct. They're down and eight percent is a fairly good number. But the overdoses are through the roof. So it's a result of us being out there, not using Narcan. Unfortunately, we use it four times as much. So, I mean, we have to fund it. We have to fund it because there's no question that Narcan saves lives. There's all kinds of theories about there about, you know, what's the next step? But from our perspective as first responders and the ones that are going into those homes, the ones that are going into the bathroom, finding them on the bathroom floor, we have to have that Narcan in our toolkit. We always have our, we always have our ears and eyes open for...
Yeah? So I wanted to know if we can help you somehow?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, just a question off what you just said. Does that mean that they're tolerating it more where you need more Narcan input in order for you to resuscitate, somebody to bring them back, you know, to get the breathing going again? Is that because, like you said, the repeat customers, I think you used the phrase, is that...
Are the doses that just...
Right.
We don't know how many times they're being administered Narcan outside of the town of Wakefield. They could be on Route one and Saugus could be servicing them a number of times. I don't really know from a medical point of view if you develop resistance to Narcan. But I can tell you this, with the use of fentanyl that's on the street today, it takes more Narcan to reverse the effects of fentanyl. Every, almost every overdose that we're going to now, and I can tell you that every fatal we go to now has large amounts of fentanyl, which is used as a cutting agent now in heroin. We're starting to see, and this is public knowledge, I'm not hiding anything, not giving up anything here. We're starting to see Narcan, I mean, fentanyl being used as a cutting agent in cocaine. And cocaine is making a huge comeback on the street. So we're getting overdoses from cocaine now that we never had before because it's laced with fentanyl. So the street load of fentanyl for our personnel is phenomenal. Neighborhood community had three fadals last week from Monday to last night. And all fentanyl laced. Some major cities around here had twenty. They weren't all fadals, but they were, twenty overdoses in a week is, that's a lot. That's a lot.
So even if, like say five years ago when you started using it or whatever the timeframe was, one dosage used to revive someone, bring them back to breathing, maybe just in general? I'm just trying to get an idea. Now it seems like it's two, three, four doses. That's what you're saying, which is...
But I think we're convinced, we've convinced, and there's enough out there for us to lean on, that it has to do with fentanyl. Four, five years ago, they cut heroin with different cutting agents. Since there's been such a, you know, a push, such a large influx of fentanyl coming into this country, we've seen, everybody has seen an increase in the overdoses and the increase in the use of the reversing agent being the Narcan.
Yeah, thanks.
I think we, over the past several years, we've added money to the budget for mental health training. Officers to really be keeping an eye out on those issues. Domestic violence dedicated officers. We have officers in the schools. All going to make our community safer and safer than I think a lot of communities that we're seeing around the country. And I, those officers in the school, the officers with domestic violence training, they are seeing problems before maybe they get to a critical mass. It doesn't, nothing's a guarantee. But I also was thinking that, you know, your officers, you weren't chief at the time, but they walked into a mass shooting not knowing what they were going to get. They had no idea what they would face. They responded and, God willing, the shooting had ended. Not, we lost so many people on that day. But they had no idea. I remember talking to officers after who were completely shaken, but they ran into that building. So I'm also convinced that our officers would do the same. But I think we put so many protections in place to stop it from that point. So I just want to thank you like everyone else has done and I believe the budget, you know, supports what we need to do to keep us safe.
Oh, thank you.
Any other comments in the board?
I just have a quick Narcan question. So is there, there's a line item somewhere in the fire department budget for their supply of Narcan? Is that...
Yes.
Separate items?
Yes.
I assume you guys would share if somebody was running low or...
You want to give me the chief's money?
And then just back to your comment about being short, three officers and potentially six in the future. What's the planning process around that from a budget standpoint? Is this something you had a discussion with, you know, Steve and you guys decide?
The positions are in the budget.
Okay.
It's, so we've already budgeted for them. I think that was misunderstood.
Oh, okay.
The fact is, is that the chief and to his credit, A, make sure we're getting the best.
Yes, please.
And there's a rigorous protocol to go through. I've seen the interviews. I'm glad I'm not interviewing. Where the lieutenants grill them. But that's good. That's why we have the office we have. So those positions are in the budget.
Okay, all right. So you're not, you're not being hindered by a budget and...
No, but operationally, we're handcuffed because, you know, we're going to be six down. The academy is six months. So right now, we're, we're shooting for May Academy. We're going to have three recruits going in. I'm still, I'm still down three offices.
So why, why does the academy matter? Can't you hire a lateral from somewhere else or somebody? Just help me out then. I'm missing something.
We can. We're not looking for laterals. We, we can, we're not looking for laterals, and we have had some good luck-
Okay.
And then there's others that have been rejected because you, sometimes you absorb another agency's problem children.
Yeah.
And the one, the laterals that we've taken in Wakefield have proven, because of what we put them through, has proven very positive, but there are others who we basically have set aside because we knew that we, they don't belong here, they wouldn't have fit here. So, and to be quite honest, right now there's no laterals out there on the waiver wire. We go out, we look for them, we can't find them. So, you know, we do the best we can, but-
Okay.
Quite honestly, I would, from a fiscal point, a, a lateral makes sense, okay? Strictly for dollars and cents, but from an operational standpoint, a lateral sometimes can be a worst nightmare because I would rather put people through our vetting process, get them into the academy and train them the way that we operate, because laterals may operate a little bit differently than Wakefield operates differently than some of them, you know? So, we want them trained to the way that this administration is, is looking at, so-
Got it.
Now, bear in mind, when we round into next year, into 2019, there are going to be three more officers leaving. I know of three. That's not counting people who may leave, people who got injured. We have one person out on extended leave right now in addition to the three that are on, on our street, so it's, and we tried, this board last year gave us an extra person to try to offset that. That extra person just never happened. I mean, we lost, we lost two in the academy, and then we refused to hire because of the list that we got.
Okay.
The candidates on that list just wouldn't, couldn't, didn't pass muster.
So, the, the, being down three and potentially six, just to conclude, fellow operational issues, hiring, retention, you know, that type of thing, it's, you're not hindered by the budget in hiring the people you need?
No.
Okay.
We're funded, we're fully funded.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's just, it's just, what it does, it costs me overtime.
Right, 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 okay.
You know, and then, well, forget, but officers get hurt, they get sick.
Yeah.
And-
All right, just making sure, because you said we're down three, we're down six, I was like, what the hell are we doing here? It's a budget meeting, let's get you the money you need.
Yeah, it's, it's not a fiscal issue, it's, it's an operational issue right now, so-
All right, dude. I'm good.
You're good. Ed?
I guess maybe more of a, a process question for Tom, but I've sat through a number of these budgets now, and, and one thing that strikes me about them is, we're asked to, as a board, to, to vote on these, but we have the finance committee that really drills down and goes through in great detail, and I would, you know, I have, obviously have some experience in finance committee looking through these budgets, but I would love the opportunity to get some sort of feedback from finance committee before we, as a body, you know, vote, not, nothing gets pleased at any budget, you know, for that matter, and I feel like, you know, I, I think finance committee, I think subcommittee has maybe met with you guys, I don't even think you guys have gone before finance committee yet though, right?
Yes.
So, I don't, it's more of, and I know that the charter has some limitations, and so I, I get that, but I just think it would be a more productive exercise for us if we had input on, on all these budgets from those that are charged by us, to really drill down and look at them all, and, you know, identify anything, because I don't know, you know, I know that, that with this percentage increases, I don't know if that's appropriate, it might be more, might, might be appropriate, but in another budget, you know, it might be maybe not three percent, but maybe two percent is more, is more appropriate. I mean, public safety is obviously a top priority of our town and of this board, so I, I don't know how that shakes out, but I feel like, you know, without that kind of input, I feel like we're kind of like missing an important piece to, to this analysis and discussion.
Well, whatever may or may not make sense, I can tell you what the charter tells us we have to do.
And, and I know we're limited because of-
Yeah, and the charter contemplates that this board talk with its department heads, talk with the town administrator, come up with a budget that you propose to the finance committee, and then the finance committee holds its hearings and decides what to recommend to town meeting, and then at town meeting, if they differ from you, you can accede to them or you can contest their recommendation.
It just feels like we're doing a very cursory look at budgets and then handing it off to, and then endorsing them to then hand off to FinCom, and I know that we're limited, you know, under the charter, but if there was some, some way that we could have, even if it was subcommittees, you know, that, that came and just kind of said, okay, based on what we've, you know, this, this is what we've identified, and, you know, just so we had some sort of input, I think it'd be helpful, because I feel like we're, in, in a way, the, the finance committee is almost neutered by the fact that we've kind of, you know, already voted on something, and I understand it's subject to, you know, their further scrutiny, but I just think in general, it just feels like we're going more through the motions with all these budgets, whereas FinCom is, is more focused on the nuts and bolts of it, and, and I don't know ultimately, you know, with what you're asking, is, is this ask appropriate? Maybe, as I said, maybe it should be a little bit more when you mentioned, you know, the officer issue.
I like that.
Maybe, maybe it might be a little bit less, I, I don't know, you know, and, and some others the same way, but I just feel like we're, it, it doesn't feel like we're in a position to make this determination at this point.
I'll just address that. I mean, anytime you want, you can go down to town hall and meet with any department head you want, just as an individual, and do whatever, like any matter on the agenda. You can do as much diligence or as little diligence as you'd like, and the town hall's wide open to you as, as part of your office, and for me, I've, in the past, have done, you know, more diligence at different times and different things, or different budgets or even line items, call Steve, have it explained. I think what we're really talking about here is, for me anyway, it starts with we hired our chief executive over here, and his job is to work with his department heads and come up with a budget that's within the confines of, you know, Proposition Two and a Half and all of the other restrictions, his own fiscal guidelines that we adopted in this board five years ago, is that when it was?
Yeah, maybe seven, maybe five, six, seven.
Five, six years ago, we adopted a set of, of, you know, finance, financial guidelines for the town, and I just have a lot of faith in what Steve has done and his, his discussion with, like many companies, his discussions with his department heads are, are give and takes and negotiations that go on to come up with, you know, nobody feels like they won at the end of the day discussion, which is usually what a good compromise, compromise looks like, and just have a lot of faith in it. So, when, when it's brought here, I, I just have comfort that, that it wasn't brought here lightly. It, you know, it doesn't, Steve doesn't allow this to come before us unless he's put a lot of diligence in it, and those folks aren't going to sit at that table over there unless they feel comfortable about what's, what's in front of us, I think. So, for, for me, it's, you have faith in that, and if you have a question in something, and these budgets are, are published and brought to us ahead of time, go for it, I'm just inviting you to do it, and it's, I agree with you, it's, it's kind of weird, it's like signing the warrants, right? It's like, we've got these, all these checks and millions of dollars are going out the door, and we just go, yeah, I bet it was good, right? So, we have a little extra scrutiny there.
I do, I do question.
Yeah, yeah, well, no, what you do now is far better than what we used to do, because I used to look at them too, I'd sit here and just flip through the thing, I'd ask Steve what the hell this big check was going out the door for ice cream, like, what is this? What are you guys doing down at town hall? It's like, that's the cafeteria in the school. Oh, sorry. So, but, you know, it's, it's always healthy to take a look, but you're welcome to do it, and anybody here-
And I do, and I, and I get that, and I, I'm, I'm not questioning, you know, Steve's ability to, to do his job well, you know, it's just, we have, we have a, a finance committee that I feel like is-
But you get, our job is to give them the budget, they have nothing to work on until we say yes.
I, I understand that, I, so I guess it's, it's, one thing is kind of handing off a budget to review, the other thing is voting on a budget, which I think is really more tantamount to, like endorsing a budget, and I don't, I just think that we're missing, we have some really capable people on, on finance committee that go through with a, with a fine tooth comb and all of this, and I'd love to kind of have that input in, when we're voting on something. So, I, I understand what you're saying, Brian, from a process perspective, we're kind of handing off, even if we just kind of identify this more like as a preliminary budget versus voting in favor of a budget, and maybe that's the distinction I'm trying to draw, that if we're, you know, if we're voting to, in, in concept, introduces the finance committee up, subject to what they have to say, I just feel like it, it feels like a better process to me.
We're going to change the charter then, I think.
Any further discussion on the floor?
Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
No, I, I thank you. We, the, the way that we do it is we sit down, we sit really down throughout the year. We, the, the budget isn't a one-day thing. Kevin does a great, does a great job in putting them all together. We sit down, we, we do base it on, you know, what we've been doing in the past. These budgets are a little bit more complicated than the others, and, and I get that, they're larger and they're more complicated, there's more moving parts, but I think overall, what we try to do is try to provide the best service we can, and we try to add things that are mission-specific, we don't wave a wand and say, hey, it should be five percent, six percent, four percent, three percent. The, the chief will come and say, Steve, we really need to focus on X, or let's do that, it doesn't matter what the percentage is. Years ago, we didn't have the dedicated officers. In fact, getting all of our officers trained in the CIT, in the Council on Training Program, that was a big step. That was tough to get through the board in, in those day, in that days, what, seven or eight years ago?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Now, we're the envy of the towns around us, a lot of them are emulating, we, we had a conversation or tweeted some emails this weekend that they're reaching out to us to help us out some of the communities. Tasers, we talked about tasers tonight, I will tell you another community called us because they don't use tasers, and we went and helped them out, that's what we do, that's what is brought there, so. I get it, these are tough to look at, I'm very fond of telling the finance committee, hey, your job is to vote the recommendation of the selectmen up or down, that's what the, that's what, or the budget of the selectmen recommended up and down, that is the charter, so maybe that does need to be looked at, but again, my office is always open, I think there is a liaison that you-
That's correct.
...appointed to the, to, to each department, to each different departments, and I think you already met with the FinCom anyway, so, FinCom?
My, my, yeah, the liaisons of the FinCom.
Okay, liaisons of, liaisons of the FinCom, yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, and they're probably, they're probably in favor of this too, I would imagine.
They're favorable.
Yeah, so, but that is how we do it.
They're okay with it.
And I got to say that the police office do a great job, in fact, I wanted to talk to the chief about something today, and to his credit, he said, listen, can't talk about that, I'm on my way up to the bulk, I'll get to you later. Perfect, let me know what I need to know, that's exactly what we would want him to be focusing on, so, thank you, we do appreciate it.
I'll entertain a motion, oh, we have a motion, it's been seconded, is there any further discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing not all in favor of the police budget?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Gill, next budget, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next budget, we have Chief Sullivan here from the fire department.
The fire department's budget, we are recommending an increase of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars over the fiscal eighteen budget. This breaks down under the personal services line item, an increase of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. We, in personal services, we increased the overtime accounts, a hundred and ten thousand, and the balance of the increase, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars, is for contractual and negotiated increases. Under contractual services, there's an increase of fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars. We increased the auto maintenance line item, eight thousand dollars, based on current and prior year cost. We increased the miscellaneous equipment repair, two thousand dollars, again for current and prior year cost. There's a new line item for advertising, thirty-six hundred dollars, this is to be used for a media relations consultant, similar to what we have in the police department. And we increased the unclassified line item, five hundred dollars, based on current and prior year cost. Under materials and supplies, we have a decrease of twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. We, that breaks down, we increased the motor vehicle parts line item, nine thousand dollars, based on current and prior year costs. Decreased the gasoline line item, two thousand dollars. We increased medical supplies, two thousand dollars, due to the increased cost of Narcan. We increased the public safety and materials line item, four thousand dollars. Two thousand of that is for a grant match, and we decreased the uniform line item, thirty-four thousand, three hundred dollars, which was contractually negotiated, that we removed it under the uniform line item, put it into their best base pay. We increased sundry charges, five hundred dollars, due to increased association dues. The total budget request for fiscal two thousand nineteen, five million, three hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
We accept the budget.
Second. Then seconded, any discussion from the members of the floor? Mr. Fallon?
Liaison wins.
Well, liaison wins, excellent. I like that, I like that, I like that.
She's good at liaising.
So, liaison, I am the liaison to the fire department, and I met with a handful of members of the fire department as well as Chief Sullivan, and I've had conversations with him about this budget. I drilled down into it and then went to talk to Steve, as I've always done, the police budget as well, I, I talked to Steve and I want to go through the details, because I, I want to feel comfortable when I'm, when I'm up here voting on that, but I think this is a good budget. I think, you know, as a liaison, you probably have a proprietary interest to the police, you always want to add stuff, I want to add more things to the fire department just because I think there, there are avenues that we can go, and we, we have talked about that, we've talked about potentially doing a deputy chief position in the future, near future, very near future. So, I think this is a good budget, I would like to hear Chief Sullivan talk to it as well.
I think it's, it's a fair budget, you know, given what we're using the money on, right? It's, it's more representative of what we're actually using the money on.
Right.
I'm happy with it.
Good.
Very appreciative.
I'm writing that down, happy with the budget.
I want it to make more than the police, so we have to add another four hundred thousand, can you find four hundred thousand?
I can find anything you want.
Ryan?
So, so Kevin, if I just saw this right, this, this is the stuff that makes, that makes these really interesting. There's, your total increase is three hundred and fifty-one K, because you have a bunch of savings, twenty K here, thirty-four in uniforms, so it's almost like the stuff that went, you had some other smaller line items, besides labor, you had some other smaller line items that went up, some that went down, the net was actually a savings. So, basically, if, if you call those a wash, one hundred percent of the increase in the budget is contractual labor.
Correct.
Okay, this is, let's vote.
First of all, your guys and women do a terrific job, chief, and we're happy to have you and, you know, your crew in the town of Wakefield. Vacancies, where are we with those for your department?
Well, presently, we have fifty positions presently.
Any of those open?
I anticipate in the near future that we'll be probably replacing two positions, but we're budgeted for fifty positions, and that's where we're going to, that's where this budget is basically leaving us, is the fifty, fifty positions.
Thank you.
Ed?
How would adding on personnel impact the, the overtime number?
It would lower it, you'd have to offset that by the cost of-
Benefits, right.
And all that.
So, net, net, are we say better adding on, say, two firefighters, or are we better keeping the overtime as it is?
For it to make, well, just to answer your question, to, to make a difference in overtime, which is what you originally asked me, probably four firefighters. You'd have to increase the shift level for each group by one, and that would give you an, an increased buffer before we drop below ten, so that would be your savings. Again, though, you have the trade-off is that you're spending more money on benefits and salaries and so forth.
Yeah.
Any further discussion from the members of the board? Motion made it seconded, the whole favor.
Aye.
Thank you, Chief Sullivan, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Have a good motion.
Again, the firefighters do a great job, but they've had, we've had a number of tough fires lately, and I tell you how grateful I am that this budget keeps both stations open, because that makes a big difference to the people that live near, particularly the Greenwood Station, and I hate to be the one that says, hey, we didn't get there in time because we couldn't fund it, so it makes a big difference.
And somebody had asked earlier about Narcan, usually what happens in an incident is that you'll, you'll see like, if a patient needs four doses of Narcan, maybe two might come from the police department, one may come from the fire department, one may come from an action ambulance, so there's plenty of, of, you know, sharing of resources for that, so just want to make that clear, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Gill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last budget tonight is the Emergency Management Budget. We have Tom Walsh here tonight. Tom is the new Emergency Management Director. The Emergency Management Budget for fiscal 2019, we are requesting level funding. Main expenses within this budget, under Contractual Services, $10,000 for the Emergency Operations Center at the Public Safety Building. We use these funds to service and upgrade and maintain the equipment at the Control Center. And also $16,000 line item for the notification system, which is basically the reverse 911. Total budget request, $73,000.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
I move your first budget.
Second.
Moving seconded for discussion. Ed?
Can I just quickly understand this role? I know we had a few times, we had like six snow emergencies in town. Is that the sort of thing that this role encompasses? Or is this, or was it just like the issues, like the 95-128, when we had that rollover, what, a year or two ago? What, you know, what, what is, what is this role? Because I understood you to be kind of part of a team.
Well, what happens with emergency management is, Emergency Management Director, which is my position, is a resource for both police and fire chiefs, what they call incident commanders. So, if I have to open up an EOC, Emergency Operations Center, which would be at the Community Room in the Public Safety Building, and then we start the process, if how large the incident becomes, and it's bringing in other, other communities in, other resources, you know, could be state police, could be, it could be MEMA resources. So, you need a communications center there. So, and that's part of the process. So, I'm, I bring in assets, you know. Say the chief is out on the road and he has a 128 thing, he says, hey, we've got a tanker truck. I, so we activate a hazmat team, I get MEMA in, we set up a command post there, I'll bring in a, a command post vehicle for that type of thing. So, it's, it's getting assets allocated here. I can do the same thing in a snowstorm. We have a major snowstorm, not, not a six-incher, but say if you have a two-foot snowstorm comes in. So, I get hold of MEMA and say, look, I need the huge plows coming in. Can, can you give us some of that asset over here? You know, we're, we're bogged down. Say, some of our pieces of equipment are down. And they say, okay, they put you on the list. And I did the same thing in Malden. I'd have, they, they come in, they only do the main drags, but it saves you, you know, time and money and having those assets. But it, my, my position is really to make sure that the plans we have, active school shooter type of thing, what are the plans that we have. So, I'll look at it. How's the security in the schools? Let me look and see what we have. You know, I did the same thing in Malden. My last year in Malden, I got half a million dollars approved. I had all the schools brought up to safety. I had cameras installed in all the schools, keyless entry. We adopted the ALIS program. I had flip charts in for the schools, so how they responded to every incident. So, the principal didn't have to think about it. Went to a flip chart and said, hey, this happened, we do this. And so, to make it so, it makes it that much easier so people know how to respond. So, those are the things that I do coming in here. But it's basically, I do have the experience. I've had, been in a lot of incidents. It's 35 years in the fire service, 20 as a chief officer. So, I've been through 1,000 incidents, you know, been to 200 fires, you know. So, I mean, we had a 60-unit apartment house burned down in Malden. They had 95 people displaced. Brought in the MBTA, opened up a shelter, put 95 people out until we got them, you know, relocated. That's probably a five-week job, night and day. But I also had a team, you know, the city, the mayor, and everybody. We all chipped in and we got it done. But those are the things I already have. So, when I'm going to look in and see where we are, we may be great. If we're deficient in some areas, I'll, I'll say, hey, look at, maybe we could do this. Maybe we'll bring this plan up. I work closely with MEMA, the people over there. Michael Mayne was the area director in Tewksbury. And then we have a liaison, this Heather Tetch, she's, she's also in Tewksbury as well. So, those people I'll bring in, and we'll look at all the plans that we have here and what our emergencies, how we respond to everything.
Because we had like that snowstorm right there that kept people, most people home. I saw on the news, a lot of news coverage about it, and they talked about, I can't recall the town, but they had brought together like a lot of different, different people, and they said they had their command center.
Yes.
Do we do that currently? Do we have like, so like, so we have like DPW, Police, Fire, kind of like, do you coordinate that? And if there's like an out, like, gas and light, if there's like an outage, so we can put people in the high school if need be, if they don't have power, all that kind of stuff?
We would open up the EOC. We have something of that large magnitude. We open the EOC center. So, there'd be a police presence, fire presence, myself, probably the DPW, and then depending how it affected the schools, maybe someone from the school. You bring all the departments in. And part of my thing is to train people down the road so we, when we open it up, everybody knows what their role is. So, you do role planning. You'll have desk, you know, what they call desktop exercises, then you'll have a functional exercise. And then the last thing is what they call a full-scale exercise, where you actually go through all the motions, and I've been through that many times. And those are the things that you do so that people, you know, become proficient at, hey, we're doing this, it's a breeze. You probably haven't done in the past because it's really a job that it requires a lot of time and effort. It's hard for a police or a fire chief to do it because they're just, they're doing their job running their departments. So, that's why you need somebody else. And so, when I was in Malden, it wasn't done by the police and fire chief, it was done by somebody else. And that's when we did it. And I did it for the last nine and a half years in Malden, until I retired in '14. And that's, and that's how we worked it. And, and it, but it's a process, you know, because it's bringing everybody on board. The same thing with the schools, it takes a long time. But I think here, you know, I talked to, I, one of the people on my team that I had in Malden was a gentleman named Peter Dolan. He's probably the best school security expert in the state. He's the guy who runs the ALIS program. And he's wanted to come up with the flip charts when he was on my team. Those are the things that, when you implement those type of things, it makes life that much easier. And so, you say, hey, then we'll start another process. And all those training, all those drills that you do, all those exercises, you become commonplace, and people get on the same page. And that, that's, that's what you try to do.
You know, this, this position was just added to the budget this fiscal year. So, Tom's really, came in after the new year. So, I think that's why you see in your budgets that he didn't spend anything beginning of the year. So, we spent some, some time talking, and he's exactly right to get those SOPs, those standard operating procedures down. How can we best handle these emergencies? And I think that to the credit of the fire chief and the police chief, DPW director, superintendent of schools, MLD director, we've done okay. We've weathered the storms, but we need to keep, go to the next steps. The other thing we've talked about is shelter training and civilian response teams, helping those out, establishing extraordinary emergency relief funds, things like that. And I'm, what I really like about this position is what Tom said, think, bring assets in and bring, you know, we can tap into, like you said, tapped into the MEMA and have MEMA plow Main Street. We could save money. You know, we're using that elsewhere now. So, I'm excited about it. I'm, I'm learning. We're, we're learning because this is a new position for us. But we had a lot of people apply for it. The two chiefs were great about breaking it down to four or five people. And then we interviewed them, and it took us a little while, but I think we got a, a great asset to town of Wakefield. It's new.
The position was, was expected to be self, self-supporting with their grants and the like, right?
At some point, yeah, we hope. Yeah. But it is, it is fully funded by the tax levy.
Initially, right.
Initially, yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, let us resume with the rest of the agenda. We have 4D. Presentation Action Items, item number 4D. We have the decision from Attorney General regarding Chapter Charter Amendment Changes, 1 through 4. And I'm going to turn this over to Tom Mullen.
Chairman, we had good news from the Attorney General, which, who approved the proposed name change of your board from the Board of Selectmen to the Town Council. And this was not a complete no-brainer. She demanded that I submit a letter arguing for the, the name change. There was a local resident who submitted a longer brief in opposition to it. And, excuse me? And, but I'm, she, I'm gratified that she made what, what I, all of us believe to be the right decision. Now, we have some mechanics to get this matter completed. The proposed charter amendment has to go before the voters on the April 24th ballot. And that means that we need your approval of two things. First, the ballot question, and by statute, I had to write a simple summary of the change. And one of the pages before you then is the ballot question with my summary. And the other page, longer, is the proposed charter amendment itself. And a copy of this, believe it or not, has to be delivered to every house in Wakefield where there is any voter residing, at least two weeks before the election. So, I'd ask that you approve the question and summary and direct it, direct the town clerk to place them on the upcoming ballot, and that you approve the proposed charter amendment notice and direct that it be delivered to the homes of all registered voters in Wakefield, not later than two weeks prior to the election.
Did you also want to the chairman and chairperson?
Yeah, okay, there, there's one other issue. And let me tell you how I recommend we resolve it. Under Chapter 43B, Sections 10 and 11, we can treat these, the various parts of the proposed charter amendment as separate questions if they are properly regarded as segregable. We've done this before. A few years ago, we had a number of changes that were recommended by town meeting all at once in the charter. And so, each one was a separate question on the ballot. Here, I don't think that the various parts of the town meeting vote can be regarded as separate with one possible exception. There is one paragraph that says, striking wherever it appears the word chairman and replacing it with the word chairperson. That is something that we could break off and treat as a distinct piece. I don't recommend doing so. It seems to me that the, the whole ball of wax really was intended to eliminate sexism in the language of our charter. But we do have that option of create, of, of taking that out and making it a separate question on the ballot.
Do we need a motion to approve?
So, the first motion that we will need is to direct the town clerk to place on the ballot the question and the summary as provided by Mr. Mullen. That'll be the first.
Selman.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The second motion, if I'm pretty correctly, would be to also direct the town clerk to place on the warrant two weeks prior.
No, no, to, to.
Post it.
To, no, to instruct the, the town administrator to see to the delivery to every house containing any registered voter in Wakefield, not less than two weeks prior to the election, the notice of proposed charter amendments, which is before you.
That could be by mail.
That could be by mail.
Yeah.
So, a motion to accept the wording?
Second.
So, move and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, you have your two motions that you need, Mr. Mullen?
That's it. I think implicit in both was that we're not going to separate out the chairperson.
Excellent.
Question. Okay, thank you.
So, that moves everything forward now to the April 24th.
Yes. So, I think, very briefly, because we placed the motion, Ed, it was your motion to change the name to Town Council, although pushed a little bit by this side, but to ultimately use the name Town Council. I think because it was our motion that was overwhelmingly supported at town meeting, I would hope that as an entire group, we would support the question that will be voted on in the ballots at April 24th. So, I don't know.
I hate the name Town Council, but I'm in full support of it.
Yeah.
I second that.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I've never liked it because it's the name of a legislative body. But that aside, it's way more important.
It was a compromise vote for some of us.
It's far more important to change the name than it is, than, it doesn't matter what it's been.
To move forward.
So, hopefully, at some point in the near future, this, this whole body could perhaps send out something to support the, the vote, whether it's a letter from us as a board. We have done that in the past. We've done it with the garage in the past. We come.
Well, yeah.
As it, together? No, can we not support?
We, we can't spend town funds on any ballot measure. We, we have done so in the past.
Write a letter to the editor.
Oh, okay, okay. Let me back up.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about a letter to the editor, something as simple as that.
So, so, I would like to move forward on a proposal to go the lines of the editorial, put something in the paper, have Tom, the town administrator draft that letter for our approval.
Why would, I, I love our town administrator, but why would the town administrator draft the letter?
I think that that, it would bring up a, a component of all, the entire board. Why wouldn't that be, if, if the board's all in favor of moving forward, who would be the drafter of the, the so, the letter?
You haven't been in the company, dude. Whoever's idea it is, that's a great idea. You're on it.
I certainly, I mean, I, I would work.
I can work with you.
I would absolutely work with Steve.
So, I want the two of you.
Yeah, that's fine. With the approval of the whole board. I would never think to put something forth that didn't have everyone's eyes on it.
Absolutely.
What's in a name?
What's in a name?
Absolutely.
Apparently a lot.
Words matter.
Okay, so, are we, are we in agreement to, as a board, to go forward with a letter into the paper expressing our agreement to make this change?
Assuming folks agree with the language, which I'm sure they will. It's not going to be a cry for battle.
No. I, I don't anticipate that.
Go for it.
I don't see why, why we have to vote on this. I mean, if you want to write a letter to the editor, then you get endorsements from people who want to, you know, be co-signed to it.
I'm saying from the whole board.
I understand. But if it says, if you want to write that and then run it by everyone and whoever feels comfortable with the way it's written, is signing off on it with you.
That's fine.
I think that that's, I don't think it's a, something to vote on.
But when it is submitted, it's going to go, be submitted as from the entire board.
Well, what I, what I would suggest, Paula, is that anyone that wants to write a letter, probably sounds like Ann wants to write a letter. She, she circulates it around to people individually. And if they want to, I mean, we're, we're still residents of this town in addition to select people.
No, I understand that. I, I don't want to write a letter. I think it's a nice, it's a statement from our board as the elected members who we put this motion forward to suggest that we also hope you support it at the ballot. Since we've done that, there have been a lot of towns that have followed our lead and who, who actually came up to me at the conference to ask, how did we do it? I mean, we're not, might have been the trailblazers, but we're certainly not. It's, you know, folks are doing it much more so than they were a year ago. So, it's fine.
I would say, I think you can circulate a letter. Anyone that wants to sign off on it can sign off on it. And if you're unanimous, that's great, you know? And if it's, and if it's not, then so be it. But it's.
Sure.
And everyone's name is on it that you want to have on it. And if it's unanimous, that's what you sign it as, as the board as a whole, right?
Certainly.
So, do we, is this going to require that we just agree to this?
No. I'll just write, I'll write something and I'll, I'll hopefully assume that the whole board will be in favor if they're not individual.
Okay, that's fine.
That makes sense.
We got a month. I can't wait to read it.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you, Dan.
That's fine. Is there anything else we got in, the items on the agenda other than our go-round? Did we miss anything?
I think you hit everything.
Okay, so.
We hit everything, Sherri? I think we did.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, so the only thing that's left is, item number eight matters not anticipated by the chairman within 48 hours of the meeting. Let's start with the left and work my way around the table. Marin?
Sure. So, a couple of things. One, Steve, I like putting things on your to-do list. Can you talk to the Boys and Girls Club about doing childcare now that we have a date for town meeting?
Yes.
Because I think it was really valuable last time, and I'd love for them to do it again.
Yep.
Just a little side note, we lost a member of our community last week when Tarian, who was a member of the UU Church, and she was a member of my book club, the book, the little, was she a neighbor? She was lovely. And the, there's a nook in the library that was named after her husband, and we're hoping that it'll, her name will be added to it. So, I just wanted to say a little share moment with her. She was lovely and read two books every day. She was lovely and read two books every day, avid reader. And then just a little reminder that WEF has their spelling bee on Friday night, if anyone's going to be there. Should be a fun event, their second annual. And then I think we'll talk more about this as we go around, but I had a couple of members of the community reach out to me and say they appreciated Superintendent Dr. Kim Smith's response to, about what happened today. And so just to give that feedback, that they appreciated the communications.
I realized I didn't give the love to the firefighters that I did to the police with regard to being first responders and rushing into scenes and knowing what this town has gone through in the past, and knowing so many of these, the firefighters graduating with a good chunk of them as well, that I think we are as safe with them as we are with the police officers and, as they protect us. I think we're so lucky to have both departments. And it seemed like what could have been a crazy chaotic scene, it probably was at some level, seemed to be handled unbelievably well today. So kudos to everyone involved from the school department down.
Thank you. Ed.
Two things, both involving public safety. One, just want to recognize and remember all the children in Florida who were impacted by that horrible mass shooting, and it was a sobering reminder today that no place is immune from that. And, you know, fortunately, it was not a similar situation, but it obviously could have been. And so it, it's, we have great comfort in the police department that we have, the fire department that we have. You know, public safety is one of the top priorities of this, of this board, and I think that, that was demonstrated today, you know, how superior a job they can do. Along those lines, this Saturday, the third, is the public safety building tour at 9:00 a.m. I would encourage anyone who's not been in, or even if you have been, to come and take a look, to understand exactly where the deficiencies lie in that building, and the reasons why we need to get it right this time with the renovations and the construction that is being proposed. Thanks.
Thank you. And one of my close friends is a teacher at the Voke, and I've been in contact with him today. It was a crazy, chaotic scene up there today. Friday night, as Mavri mentioned, is the WEF fundraiser. I'll be working it, so, you know, please come down and, you know, participate. And for those of us in this room, for the past three-plus hours, the girls' basketball team won their first playoff game.
Excellent.
Nice. Mr. Falvey.
Just, just an observation, I'll second or third, wherever we're at here with our public safety personnel and first responders, you know, great job, kind of a, you know, but for the emotional harm that obviously probably caused today, probably interesting opportunity to have a, an event that wasn't a drill that kind of was a drill. So, you know, and just, you know, you always wonder how you're going to respond when it's real, and people got to feel like it was real today, which is unfortunate, I get it, but, but it's probably, hopefully they learned some things there and can only improve the safety of things just from today alone. So that's great. But, you know, that's, kind of as I, as I Saturday night looked at the agenda, I think, you know, our other unsung hero, you know, Betsy here, all these folks are kind of agents of change. We've got a, you know, what a really cool selectmen's agenda. We've got, we're changing the name of the board from Board of Selectmen to some other name. We are, we have our proposal, we have an RFP out for two sheets of ice hockey rink done in partnership with the, with the Voke, right? That's, that's really cool stuff. We've got Betsy bringing us into, I would say, the 20th century, that would be the last millen, you know, the last century in voting, or not voting in churches and places like that anymore. I mean, it's, it's so obvious, and it's so smart, and it's just, it's nice to see the change and who the change agents are in the town, bringing things forward. It's just, it's just refreshing, and I hope everybody in the town kind of embraces the changes that are being proposed and the stuff that's going to, it will only make us better. There's a lot of people who put a lot of time and effort and thought into these things before they even make it to the light of a camera in a studio like this, let alone a ballot or something like that. So it's just nice to see. That's it. Thanks.
Well, the fund has been stolen already, but good comments. I think that the police and fire are doing a great job. I think, I talked to Steve today a little with that incident, and nightmare in Winchester even. I think the police and fire training and their, kind of their silos, their extra subgroups that they have in training have come a long way. I think a lot of towns are looking for us for indications of what they can do. I'm not sure if you ever make a library safe in Winchester, but just the fact that their training is in-depth, and people are looking for us as resources speaks novels, never mind budgets, like Brian said, it's, we already have a lot of things going for us that we don't even realize, I think a lot of the town doesn't realize, until you have a nightmare. And then, maybe today, thank God it was just a practice session, but practice went pretty well, I heard. So I just think that police and fire, budgets aside, I think that we're doing a good job as a group, Steve, kudos to Steve and all his departments for moving us in the right direction year after year. That's it.
Very good. Mr. Mullin?
Nothing, thank you.
Excellent.
I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to echo the sentiments of the rest of the board. I think we have one of the most outstanding fire and police departments around, and we had nothing but praise from them day in and day out, and they represent the town to the fullest, and we give them our heartfelt thanks each time they do it. I just want to bring to note a couple of things that are coming up this weekend. The Arts Cultural Exchange is putting on their Arts and Edibles Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night. And also on March 6th is the Women of Wakefield event, I believe.
International.
International women's event on March 6th. So.
There's great speakers.
There are some great speakers up there.
Amazing speakers, yeah.
And you can go on Everbright right now and secure yourself a seat for the event. Other than that, I have nothing further to say. I want to adjourn the motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Mr. Chairman?